Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Proton Olsson.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Hernandez is absent.
Thank you. Okay, should I turn it over to the city manager?
You will turn to me, Madam Mayor, and then I will turn to Mr. Mesher. All of the easy questions, please ask me. The difficult ones, please ask Mr. Mesher. Just to say that this has been a process. It has been a collaborative one among staff to develop a budget based on the best information available for fiscal year 1718. I want to again thank the Director of Finance, the Chief Administrative Officer, all department heads, finance staff and all staff in the city for helping in the development of this plan. I did want to mention a couple of things. You've all read, I'm sure, the report. I just wanted to highlight or refer you on the introductory paragraph to those issues that are really critical and outstanding, we believe. And with that, I'm going to stop, Bob, if you can with your permission, Mayor. Mr. Mesher gave you an overview. I waited till you sat down and, you know.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Today we'll be going over the budget. The plan for today was for, we'll go over the budget in a very high-level overview through the PowerPoint, and then I'll give an orientation of the budget packet. And then we'll cover each one of the sections except for the detail and the variances. Those are a little bit more extensive, and we can cover any of the items in those sections that you would like. And then we'll just open it up for discussion after that. And then please ask questions along the way, since this is a lot of information. And rather than waiting until the end for questions, you can just ask questions along the way. So, please keep in mind that the purpose of a budget is just a guide or a map, that this is giving us an idea of what to expect for the next year or this current year, and that we can decide to go on excursions along the way. Or maybe we come up to road construction and there's a detour and we'll just reroute through the mid-year process. Or if something major happens during the year, we would just come back to the City Council and come up with a new plan. So this is not something that will keep us from doing other things in the future as new opportunities come along. Overall, the financial condition is very good. The 1718 budget that we're proposing is balanced operationally. It utilizes about $2.8 million of cash reserves and $3.6 in grants to complete critical one-time projects such as $1.9 million of Pebbley Beach Road riprap restoration, $1.4 million in the global improvement project which involves the sewer, saltwater and street repair that was initiated two years ago and is well underway and on its way to completion now. Additional sewer infrastructure and then beginning the design and perhaps the construction later in the year or early next year for the mall lower and upper structures. The projected ending cash balances in total for the year are projected to be about $14 million. And the operational revenues overall are conservatively projected to be similar to this year's revenues, about $28.4 million. And the proposed budget operating expenditures are about $26.6 million. This pie graph of the various revenue sources, you can see that our fees account for about one-fifth of our revenue, grants a little less than one-fifth, visitor revenue accounts for about almost a third, and then various other revenue sources.
Bob?
Yes?
Is the taxes-visitor at 18%? Is that only TOT or is that admissions tax as well?
Yes and yes.
It's both of those?
It's both of those.
Is there any additional?
Sales tax it would include.
Sales tax?
Yes. In the visitor-generated revenue report that's published periodically, that's up on our website, that's what's represented by that 32% up there.
Okay, thank you.
The uses of revenue, or in other words, our expenditures, our salaries and wages and the related payroll taxes and benefits is about a third. Our contracted services are a little less than a third, and our capital projects are about a fifth. And then the rest is maintenance and operations and then the successor agency debt service, which that's fully funded by the state through the property taxes of the redevelopment agent, the former redevelopment agency. This is a table of our budgeted expenditures. It was included in the summary letter in your budget packet. And what it's showing is that our total expenditures are $33 million, and then it's showing the various funds with the expenditures. By far, the general fund has $15 million. The harbor is at $8 million. Next would be sewer at $3 million, and then the other funds. And I'll make this PowerPoint available on the website if you want to be able to print it out later, and we have printed copies over here. The next table shows our net operating revenue. Net operating revenue is important because we want all of these totals to be positive, to be a total of net operating revenue rather than a loss. We need to have sufficient funds available to set aside funds for reserves and for future capital projects. The housing authority doesn't really have a source of income right now besides investments, so any labor assigned to that or allocated to that is the reason for that deficit. The transportation of $180,000 is primarily the taxi subsidy of about $96,000. And then we started this year to allocate other expenses that were normally included in the general fund, such as vehicle maintenance, some of Audra's time, general insurance, et cetera. And that's what makes up those additional amounts. So those are not really new expenditures, but we're wanting to show those in the transportation fund so that when Audra goes out for additional funding from outside, that she can show our true operating costs and get those covered as well. So we're hoping that that's just a temporary deficit and not an ongoing deficit. The harbor and fuel dock is, has, is Scott here and my time is up? Thank you. The harbor and fuel dock has about $300,000 net revenue, and that's good because there's a lot of work to be done on the mall and there will be matching funds required. So we need to build up our reserves for that. The sewer-
I'm sorry, on the harbor and fuel dock, the fuel dock is the gasoline. The harbor, that's the people coming and mooring in there? I mean, I don't understand what the harbor-
We're combining the operations of the fuel dock with the harbor.
Right.
And just that operation as a whole, I'm calling harbor and fuel dock. It's the harbor fund on our financial statement, and that includes the fuel dock operations and the harbor operations. So no, there's not a component that would be charged to the fuel dock for the mall, if that's what you're asking.
No, I just don't understand where that money, where the $280 comes from.
Well, that's the net, this is, these are the net revenues. If you had a private business, this would be your profit.
Okay.
Your net profit before other investments such as capital improvements and things like that.
Can I just go sideways for a moment?
Sure.
With the fuel dock then, the fuel dock has historically been kind of, since the city of Avalon took it over, has been its own revenue and expenses, and all of that contributes to the cost of the fuel. Is that going to be, is that going to continue on that way, or will it be combined with a greater harbor activity?
Well, since I've been here, and it's been a very short time, and the fuel dock's been closed all the time that I've been here, but the fuel dock historically has been included in the overall harbor operations on our formal audited financial statement. The plan is to keep the fuel dock operation separated so that we can ensure that we're trying to achieve a break even with our fuel.
Mm-hmm.
But in this budget, the fuel dock didn't achieve that. But I have some additional work to do as far as working with our new harbor master and Cheryl and make sure that our fuel prices reflect our operating costs.
I know that we won't be able to do it during this particular budget cycle, but perhaps an item, you know, with council's discretion, we need to find opportunities and ways to reduce the cost of fuel for the visitors and for, you know, the local operations here. So perhaps that could be, you know, there's got to be a way to do that. If we can, the more fuel we sell, the less expensive it will be, because the more fuel you sell offsets each gallon of gas over the operating expenses. But we're seeing more and more people purchase their fuel from over town rather than over here because of the cost of our fuel is so high. So I'm just hoping, I know we can't do it during right now's budget, but if that's an item we can look at over this next year and maybe reduce, look at ways of reducing the cost of fuel.
Okay.
I think there's also the component that the fuel dock lease is getting more expensive.
Mm-hmm.
And I know the city council previously had, in past years, had looked at the idea of acquiring the interest where the fuel is stored there so that that doesn't become an ongoing cost. And I believe the council has, well, has instructed that we have some discussions and we have at least initiated those discussions with the company in regard to that acquisition so that the acquisition cost becomes the one fixed cost, and then the impact on fuel prices and on other costs should be less.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Thank you.
So the sewer, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we increased our sewer rates, and that's why the sewer net revenues are at a half million dollars. And that's needed to fund our capital expenditures that are needed to keep our infrastructure safe and maintained. The saltwater is a negative $50,000, primarily for, there were a couple expenditures added after our rate study. One of them was to allocate some of our code enforcement to saltwater. And I'm not too worried about that one because we do have planned increases over the next four years to increase our revenues, and I think that that'll cover any deficit in the future. Solid waste is about break even. And then the successor agency is controlled by the state, and that's really not within our, and that's primarily just the debt service, that's the net revenue available to pay our debt service. So this is an important page to understand. It's included both in the introductory letter and then also in our projected fund balances, and I'll point it out later when we get to those points. This slide shows our grant funding. Shows that included in our budget, we're including $3.6 million of grant revenue from various agencies. In the hard copy of the grants, the local coastal plan is paid by the Coastal Commission. I incorrectly had Office of Emergency Services on there. It excellently got copied from the line above, but that's from Coastal Commission. So these are the various grants that we've applied for, that we've either have or are in the process of applying. And it will require about a half million dollars of matching funds from either the general or the harbor fund. Finance Department goals related to this budget that I would like you to be aware of are that we're in the process of tightening our internal controls. In the near future, we want to establish operating and capital reserve policies with you for us all to agree on. We're, we have, we've been using OpenGov to be more transparent. We'll have a mid-year review probably in February of this coming year. And long-term capital improvement plan is needed, and we need to come up with a 10-year financial plan. Those all would be brought to you for approval and discussion, for discussion and approval.
So, give me an example of tightening internal controls.
Glad you asked. So, tightening internal controls would first address the audit recommendations of the last audit that we had. Coming up with changes to our procurement policy. Our current procurement policy is, because of some of the limits, causes an administrative burden, and we'd like to try to come up with a procurement policy that's, can still achieve the internal controls, but also make it easier for staff to comply. Credit card expenditures, that's already in process. We've tightened up those controls for staff use of credit cards. Travel policy and expenditures, we've tightened up on those already. Host compliance, we're engaged with host compliance right now. We're not fully up and running yet, but we will be shortly, and we're expecting to get better compliance from our vacation rentals. The lessee and taxpayer revenues, I know the mayor has been desiring that we have some way to track revenue better, and I'll be sending out a letter to the lessees and any other taxpayer revenues, revenue payers that they have to have a way of, thank you, of tracking their revenue so that they have an audit trail, so that when we do audit them, and we will audit them eventually, that we can easily identify their revenue.
Just on that, is there something written that says we do this random audit thing, or can we, once we get this established for a certain period of time, almost do everybody?
Yeah, our municipal code does say that we can audit them, and it does say that they are responsible for keeping records sufficient for us to be able to audit them, to be able to identify the revenues and how much they've paid us.
Right. So if we went around and did everybody that first year, that would be okay? We don't have to-
It probably wouldn't be feasible to audit everyone.
Right.
All at once, but we should have them on a cyclical audit so that over a period of time, let's say four or five years, everyone's been audited.
Okay.
Can we also, in this upcoming year, tighten up the ordinance on the TOT tax?
Sure.
And put some additional definitions in there?
So, well-
That's part of the-
Just have a discussion, an item for discussion, or do you have some-
Yeah, I think we've talked already previously about, you know, what the auditors are looking for versus what's, what the ordinance says, so that, so there's some differences in opinions as to what's on paper and what's actually being audited.
Yes.
So if we can somehow in this next year-
Yes, we can do that.
And just a comment, you said mid-year, probably in February. Can we tighten that up to a, I mean, probably is really probable?
Okay, yes, we will do it in February.
Okay.
And I didn't notice my monthly financial statements.
The, the plan is to have that available on our OpenGov website so that you can see, do you want to have a, what would you like to receive for your monthly?
OpenGov's fine for me, but I don't know about the department heads. It's not for me, it's for the department heads.
Okay. I, Nia, our senior accountant, Nia, has been working with OpenGov, and we're within about, I'm hoping this week or next week, that we will have all of our transactions uploaded to our OpenGov site, so then the department heads can see their monthly transactions and be able to drill down to specific transactions. And that'll be only used internally at first, and then once we're comfortable that it's appropriate for the public to see, then we would make that available, we would make it available to you and the department heads at the same time, and then to the public at a later time.
Is it planned to have a budget comparison?
It has, compares it to the budget, yes, and to prior years.
Okay.
So that'll be real-time data, or will it be-
Not real-time, real-time, but we're planning on updating at least monthly, if not weekly.
Okay.
Cool.
Our OpenGov is in the process of working with our financial software vendor that, what we're hoping for at some time is then OpenGov will be able to just extract our data automatically without any staff intervention, which just automatically would happen. And then the last one is property tax parcel data. In this last rate studies that we did with sewer, salt and trash, we were noticing that there were some discrepancies between what's physically here and what's on our LA County parcel records, that evidently there's been some development that was never relayed to LA County, and we need to get that information updated, and that will result in an increase in our property taxes.
How is that discovered?
Well, we have access to the county records, and when we compared it to our data that Lori Montgomery has and what Amanda has, that there were discrepancies, and we need to research those and update the LA County records, if their records need to be updated or update our records if they're incorrect.
Didn't some of that also go both ways?
Yes.
So it may not necessarily have a net increase?
That's possible, yes. As far as establishing an operating reserve, it's usually recommended to have at least 90, if not 120, days of cash reserves for operating expenditures, in case something were to happen unexpectedly to revenues. And based on that 120 days, here's where we stand right now. The general fund should be at about $4 million. We're projected to be at $6.2 million at the end of this fiscal year, so we're in good shape on the general fund. The housing doesn't have expenditures, operating expenditures per se right now, except for a little bit of our labor allocated towards housing efforts. And that $5 million that we have right now would be for capital projects. The transportation really should have a reserve of about $530,000 based on its expenditures, but we have no reserve right now, and it's currently being a little bit subsidized by the general fund. The harbor is, should be at about $2.2 million, and it's projected to be about $1.2 million, so it's a little shy. And, but it's good that we're, we at least have half of what we should have. The sewer should be at about $640,000, but if we get the projects completed that we're expecting, it will be down to about $100,000. So we'll need to work on, make a plan to increase our reserves for that or delay some capital expenditures. The saltwater is, should be at about $200,000, and we're in good shape there. And the solid waste is, should be about $600,000, and we're in good shape there at $1.2. Although a lot of that $1.2 should be held in anticipation of the landfill closing.
If I may, Bob, in mentioning the general fund where we talk about the $4 million, what, this is, the general fund, as you all know, is that fund that funds those things that there's no other resources available, general, many times, public safety and others. We have a number of capital improvement projects that are, that require local match, and while those, that match in this year will not be needed, there will be a match needed in future years. Without the new sources of revenue, that match will either come from the general fund or it'll, in some cases, or it won't, or the grant won't be, won't be fulfilled. And this is why you, with your, under your direction, we're forming the EIFD, the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, so that we get dollars from increment from the growth and tax base that we can use as a match. And this is why in addition, we'll be bringing to you in September, the proposed interim development impact fees that can be, that are, that can be applied to help match in those areas that the fee is collected for. So that is why that's so critical. And on the solid waste, and one of the points that was made in the overview, is while we have a closure fund, we're going to need a new site or some new, not only closure, but we're, but in 10 years or 10 to 11 years, we're going to need a new location. So that conversation and that planning for that new location needs to begin now because, as you all know, it takes time to do those things here particularly, but anywhere.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Which brings us to establishing capital reserve policies. There's additional information that we need to develop before we can establish our capital reserves. Those things are, we need to look at our long-term master plans for each fund, the infrastructure, the facilities and equipment replacements that are needed at least over the next 10 years or more if we have that information available. And then, once we have that information, plan on what grants can be used or any other external funding. And once we know those two pieces of information, we can use our operating net revenues to project the long-term cash projections and come up with what we will need to accomplish those needed capital improvements. So we really need to work towards that goal- work towards that goal in this year, and, and come up with, with capital reserve policy sometime before the end of this year.
Do you, how do you work on those goals? Do you work on those goals with your existing staff? Are we going to need to bring people from the outside to help with this? How are all those, because that's a lot of, that's a lot of food on a plate.
I, I agree. I think that's a discussion that, that David Jenkins and, and staff will have to figure out, that, I, the staff has access to all the information. The point you're making is, do we have the time to do that? And we, even if we hired a consultant, we, you know, it's still going to involve staff time.
What, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Please.
We, we, we really, what we're talking about here, and in, using another name, is a public facilities implementation plan. We need a plan for public facilities, for the sewer plant, which is aging. We need storm drainage, the system that needs to be upgraded and repaired, the sewer infrastructure, not just the plant, but the collector system, the collector line systems. We have a lot of information. I know Bob Greenlaw is, is, is reining in all our, the information we've had over time, and then that will become the basis for, for the, for the master plan for each segmented area. And from that, as Bob has said, then we can develop what the costs are, project those costs over time, and then what revenue, and what revenue will be needed to implement those changes. And that, that is the, the job of Bob, you know, that I, that we are now working on. In the case, for example, of recreation, you have in this budget a recreation master plan. We need something that gives you an overall picture of what are not only in programs, but in facilities. What are the facilities that we need in this community, and approximately how much do they cost? The issue of where they'll be located will be a topic of, I'm sure, of interest and discussion. So, all these plans then come into a, what we call it, a facilities plan, a master plan, and then those plans will, will inform us, and you, most importantly, on, on the costs associated with, with them. And on, on that basis, we'll achieve the goal that, that the director has, has spoken about, and that you have spoken about as well, so.
I guess what I'm saying is, you've written up a lot of hefty goals. And, and this to me isn't it, that, that shows accountability. And I'm, so it makes me nervous to have all of those things on your plate. And then go February, March, oh man, we're not getting this done, not getting that done. I mean, I, I don't know if some, some have more priority than others, or what, but I mean, this is a, appears to be a lot.
Let me, let me say something on that, if I may, Mayor. Part of actually the development of the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District is we have already identified major projects that need to be constructed. That you've, you've used R S G, R G S.
Yeah.
Dyslexic on the, on the, on the letters, but, but, so we're identifying those capital. It's not going to happen all today, but what we have to do is get in place the finance mechanisms. Now, as we did in the eighties with R D A, we have to get that, we have to get a source of revenue. And then we'll, with the, with the E I F D, we'll identify the major infrastructure issues, and then, then correlate revenue with infrastructure. And it's not just a sole task of the finance, it's, it's a task of all of us.
I know, but, but what you're talking about is only one thing, one big thing. I'm talking about all the other stuff.
There's lots of big stuff.
Even with your first, your first deal, and then I go, yeah, tightening, you know, all of those even, those six right there. I mean, that's that. And then you have these other goals, and I'm just thinking, wow, that's a, that's a platter, not a plate. And so.
Well, the internal controls are, are, are very important, as Bob's talked about. The mid-year review, the transparency of information, that's something that is current, that Bob's working and his department's working on, so that we can have reports, you can have reports, department can have reports on an ongoing basis, so that they can see how they're doing against projected revenue expenditures. The tenure financial is going to take longer, obviously, it's not. And it's not something that only Bob has to do, it's some things that we all have to do as, as a management team, and that's what we will be doing.
But I think you know what I'm saying.
Yeah. Tightening internal controls is, you know, that's my job. And, and so I don't consider, consider that to be an insurmountable task. Establishing operating and capital reserve policies, that's going to have to be a group effort among the department leaders and city council and the public, and make sure that we're all working towards accomplishing our long-term capital improvement plan. And the mid-year review, also my job to make sure that you, you, the city council and the department leaders know where they are. And OpenGov transparency, that's, that will be completed for sure in September, possibly later this week, as far as, as getting that up and running for the department leaders, and then I'll just need to train them individually.
No, no, I get it. I, I guess, you got a, you got a big plate back there.
To, to, to add to the plate, Mayor, just to not, to add to the plate. The, one of the issues that we're facing is rising costs of healthcare for, for our employees. And that's going to be a conversation that we're going to have to have with employees about that rising cost and what we do about that. There's also the increased costs, at least on an interim basis, with PERS, with CalPERS, for reasons that I won't editorialize, because I've already done it before. But to say that we have to, we have to manage that, and that conversation, when our, when our M O U's come into, come to their conclusion next year, we're going to have to have a very open, candid, transparent conversation with them. We've talked about the infrastructure, the reserve policies you've mentioned, that, that city, that, that there needs to be the, the development impact fee. Bob's talked about providing timely financial information, that's he is capable of doing and will do, I know. And, but, but there's a lot on our plate, and that we'll, we'll chew off systematically. And, and with, with the goal of, of, of keeping us solvent and keeping us having the ability to provide essential services to the community.
So I lumped the last three all together. The mid-year review, we will present in February. The long-term capital improvement plan, that's taking our existing master plans that we have, and developing any that are, are needing, need to be updated or created, such as the recreation plan. And then using those, that, using that data to come up with a 10-year financial plan. I'd like to be able to have in graph, in a graph form, showing what our cash position is for the next 10 years, and, and how it will be utilized for projects, et cetera. And my hope is to have that by the end of this fiscal year. But I would say, if anything were to be pushed out, that, that may be pushed out to the next year.
Let me comment, if I may, Mayor, also, on the issue of, of the harbor. We do not have a harbor, quote harbor, master plan that is current. In fact, I, I don't know that we can even find the last time it was done, but we need to look at all of the things that are occurring in the harbor. Cross-channel, ships, boating, recreation, moorings, and so on, and say, what can, what is the capacity of the harbor, what can it handle, and how do we handle that safely? That's probably going to be something that is going to require some help. And, and that will be something that we'll be looking at, and, and we would like to have more information to you by mid-year, or the mid-year budget review.
And then here's a list that David has already mentioned, a few of these already. We have rising healthcare costs. We need to be talking about pre-funding retirement costs for pension and healthcare. We need to make a plan for the landfill closure and alternative sites for our future solid waste. We need to consider development impact fees and the E I F D. And then affordable housing, affordable and workforce housing. So those are things that we need to be looking at in, in this coming year.
Aren't you guys already pretty close on the development impact fees?
We, we will, we will have some interim fees. We have to do still a study, but we'll bring interim fees to you within the next, what is the month, August, September? We will bring interim impact fees, and then it'll give us time to lock some fees in place, so we don't miss development. And then we will, and then we will come back with a, with the actual fee based upon the studies. And what we would tell development community is, is they will be no more than what the interim fee is, so that they can calculate a cost. And if it's less, then they would have to pay less.
Excellent.
What if we set a fee, and then the study comes back and we're charging twice as much as we should be charging?
Then, then they get, they don't have to pay that increase, that, that amount. They would, that would be reduced, and we would refund if they had already upfronted it.
Okay. The next part of our meeting is to just go through our budget packet, just to know what each section, what each section is. There's eight sections. The first section is an introduction with a letter from our city manager, and giving highlights of our, of the financial information. And included in the financial information are some of the pie charts showing the sources and uses of our revenue that were in PowerPoint. And a few of the tables. The next section is the projected fund cash balances, and that's, I, I would say, out of the whole budget, this is your best summary of the budget. And to also see how last year, the last year results were. So let's look at page eight. Well, let's first go through the, just the different sections on what they are, and then we'll come back to the, to the fund balances. The page 11 is the budget comparison summary. This is just a one-page showing all of our revenues and expenditures. These include grants, they include internal service charges in, in and out, and transfers from one department to another. So, that's why I prefer the other section called the projected fund balances. It breaks those out. But it just gives you a one-page overview of our revenues and expenditures. The next section is the revenue and expenditures by department. The general ledger, we have various department codes within each fund. And this shows you the revenue and the expenditures by department. It's a total of three pages. The bulk of the report is, is the detailed revenue and expenditures. And that's about 22 pages of detail. I would recommend that you skip that section unless there are specific questions that you have about some other component, and you can find the detail for those in that 22 pages. But it can be overwhelming if you were to go line by line on that section. Then in the next section, we have grants, capital projects, and deferred expenditures, starting at page 39 of the package. And there's the list of the grants that are, that we're actively applying for or have received. And that was part of the PowerPoint presentation. Gives a little bit more detail, though, than the PowerPoint presentation. Then two, two-page list of all of the projects, the capital projects that were, that are included in the proposed budget. And we're starting with using project numbers this fiscal year. We've not used project numbers in the past, and it makes accounting for the projects a little bit more difficult without those. So I'm hoping to streamline our, our accounting for grants and just tracking projects with these project numbers. Then, starting on page 43 and, and 44, the, there's a list of items that were deferred, that if we had all the money in the world, these are things that we would like to have in this fiscal year, but we're deferring them to future years, or eliminating them altogether. And then the next section, labor distribution. Pages 46 and 47 shows the amount of labor that's allocated to each department. And I'm comparing it to the fiscal year, the proposed fiscal year 18 budget to fiscal year 17 budget. And explaining any of the large variances. And we'll go over those in more detail later this morning. And then the last section is the explanation of revenue and expenditure variances that were over or under by more than $50,000 from the prior year's budget. And with explanations of those variances. Okay, so are we ready to start with the, the projected fund balances?
Okay.
On page eight. There's the main section of, of this report is the upper half of this report through the grand total. And then the lower section describes some of the detail that's included in the general fund. Those would include the internal service fund. Internal service funds includes the general administration, so that would be city manager, his staff, this chief administrative officer, her staff, finance department and the staff, et cetera. All, all of the city hall labor. General insurance and vehicle maintenance. Then down below, included in the general fund are also some special revenue funds, which include the, the street fund for street repair, traffic control and safety, community development block grant fund, and the McLean Hall Putnam Trust. These are just special funds that are all lumped in as minor funds included in the general fund section.
And what's the McLean Hall Putnam designated?
That's a, a fund that was established in honor of, was it McLean? And there's donations so that the, those donations are to be used for fire safety equipment.
Okay, that's okay. So, so when they say that they were deferring air packs or whatever thing over there, couldn't they get them out of the McLean? Putnam Fund, or are they using it first, or they does, trying to get that up to a certain total to use for something else?
That, that could be possibility. Do we? So just to repeat the answer for, in the microphone, is that it doesn't include ordinary safety equipment, but safety equipment above and beyond what the fire department doesn't have.
Thank you.
The first column describes the type of fund. And then the next column shows the beginning balance or the ending balance from the prior year, one and the same. The operating revenues are in the next column. Operating revenues do not include transfers, they don't include grants, and they don't include the internal service revenues. And then the operating expenditures are in the third numeric column. And the operating expenditures exclude capital projects, transfers out, and internal service expenses. And then you can see the internal services revenue and expenses, those equal each other. The way that works is the, the vehicle maintenance, the insurance, the administrative services, they receive the revenue to offset their expenses, and the various departments are charged for those services. And if you take all of those together, the operating revenues and expenditures and the internal services are a wash, you have your net operating revenue. And then the next column shows the grants coming in, the projects for outgoing cash, and then transfers in from other funds and transfers out to other funds. And that comes, and then you take the change of the net operating revenue and then minus the, plus the grants, minus the projects, and plus the transfers in and minus the transfers out, you get your net change in the fund balance and come up with your ending balance at the very end. So what was included in the PowerPoint presentation was our net operating revenue, that middle column. And that's the important one to watch. If that's negative and that negative amount is sustained year after year, that means it needs to be subsidized by either grants or the general fund.
And the, the fuel dock negative? Why is that such a great number? Our 92,000?
Where are you at?
The fuel dock in the net operating loss? The 92, that, that would be because we had to pay more to get the thing done?
Well.
Or why, why is that?
That needs more, more work. I need to work, I was mentioning that I need to work with the harbor master and, and with the staff, especially Cheryl, to reduce that loss and, and get that to break even.
And?
The, that operation is new to me since it's not been open since I've been here, and this is a new operation. So I want to be able to understand the operation and make sure that we're not trying to cover all of our, all of our costs by raising our prices. As council member Cindy said, that, you know, you raise your price too hard, that, too high, then your volume's going to go down and you're not going to cover your costs either. So I need to learn the sensitivity of that and find out.
We've already done that, Bob.
How elastic that is.
We've already raised the prices too high.
So, so if there's the, the, any kind of rent or money that would come in from the rest, a restaurant there, would, does that go into some other pot or does that go into the?
That would go, that would offset the, the fuel dock. Any restaurant on the fuel dock would offset, would reduce that $200,000.
Okay, and when is the, right now, the, the ticket to the island company for that little piece of property out there is $36,000 right now?
Mm-hmm. That sliver of land, the lease on that, what is that this year?
Up to $75,000 this year.
And you're only projecting a $92,000 loss? Wow.
And that number accelerates in, in.
Next year it's up to 135.
Yeah, it's an accelerating number, so.
For two years.
That's why that.
So that 92 might be a little low as a loss.
Yeah, and then I believe it's, is the next calendar fiscal, Cindy?
Because if we don't get the.
I think it's fiscal year.
Are they in calendar?
Because if the restaurant's not up until summer and then that goes up to 135, that looks like that number could grow, grow negatively.
It's concerned, yeah.
Okay.
So any other questions on, on that schedule? I'd like to skip now all the way to page 39.
Okay. Moving around a lot.
We're more than halfway done. Or page 40 with the grants.
Can we go back a little bit?
Sure.
On page 18.
The real, the big 18.
The big, the big 18. On, on the revenue side, we've had a little bit of this discussion about some hotel rooms come out of the inventory. But then I believe we've hired a consultant to help us collect some more transient occupancy tax.
Yes.
And if I read this right, you're going down 160,000?
The line that you're looking at is?
Is line, transit occupancy tax vacation rentals going from a million five to a million four. Kind of goes in the face of.
Yes, but it's an increase over what we're estimating for the end of the fiscal year 17, which was 1,376. And I'm conservatively budgeting the same amount for, slightly higher, but basically the same amount for this fiscal year.
And why do we have a consultant? He's not going to get us more than, and that's what we're paying him.
I, I didn't include it because it's an unknown, but I can, I can increase that.
But I, I think our thought process has to follow logic. And if we hire a consultant to get us more money, I think we have to reflect it. You know, it's, otherwise the argument for spending the money doesn't exist in my mind.
Okay.
And then.
The other unknown that I didn't know is that once we've identified the vacation rental units that are out of compliance, there's going to be, I would anticipate, there's going to be a, a large number that do not have a conditional use permit. And we would need to come to the, to the city council and to the planning commission to find out, do we want to issue COPs to those units? Or do we want to somehow have an amnesty? Or do we want to have cease and desist and somehow prevent these or enforce these units not to be selling for vacation rentals? And I don't know the answer to that question.
I believe the agenda item was to increase our revenue streams by a significant number because there are 330 units, there's saying there's going to be 600 units in town. And so I, I, it just, it just doesn't pass the smell test.
Okay.
That other, the peaky little one is the one I talked about, the trans, the admissions tax, where one of the operators in town has not been providing a major portion of the services this year, fiscal 17, 18. So I think you should look at that too. Get some revenue, lose some revenue.
Okay. Do you have a recommendation for what you think the?
I'll bet you the admissions tax is like 40 grand, 50 grand.
Okay.
You'll, you'll know when, as soon as you get the September report.
I've looked, while we were waiting for the meeting to start, I, I looked at the, the revenue and I think 40 or 50,000 if they take no action, if they continue not to run tours, I think that is a realistic number.
Well, they, they can't run the tours, they get a PUC certificate, and that's possibly once down the road.
Okay. And as far as the TOT for the vacation rentals?
I would go back and look at the staff report regarding hiring these people and find out what the assumptions were in that.
Okay.
And I think Mayor Protam, that, that, then have a conversation, if you will, with the party who's doing the work to, to get a best estimate. It would be better than my estimate, but to get, to get a best estimate and then include that. And then, of course, depending upon what they find, when we come to mid-year, we can, we can see, we'll have more information and we can adjust one way or the other. Is, is that fair to say, sir?
I think we, you know, first check what the assumptions were. The assumptions are, are valid. I mean, because there's some stuff in here, there's some projects in here that have been deferred, that would be nice not to defer some of them. And so if there's an additional revenue stream that's available, and I don't want to go in the hole, but there's additional revenue stream that's available, let's look at some of the deferred stuff and get it up onto the approved stuff.
And then since we're talking about TOT, we also were considering the effects of Atwater closing. I, I sent you the assumptions last night as far as not changing the TOT based on the assumption that most of it would be absorbed through other hotels and other vacation rentals. Did you want to discuss that at all, or?
Well, I think if you look at the hotels in Avalon, they're fairly stratified, and the Atwater's at the lower end of it. And so there's not that many lower end hotel rooms that will suck up the excess. And so an Atwater customer won't necessarily move into the pavilion or the Avalon or something like that for the bill of portefeuille. They're not, they're going to defer, they're either turn in a day trip or not come. And so I think there's going to be an impact on, a greater impact than you put in your summary. It was nicely done. I follow the logic. It's just that I think it missed some of the stuff that there's, it's, the Atwater is a hotel that serves a particular segment of the population, and that segment I don't think necessarily is going to be able to upstale to other hotels in town. And so looking at what the Atwater paid us in TOT, we might want to think about.
Yeah, they, they paid about 9% of the total TOT for hotels.
Okay, then a number of that 50% or something probably will go away. It'd be my guess.
They got their summer numbers, but that's all. Do we have July to September?
We have a, we have a thorough numbers. Yeah, they'll be here, they'll be here till October and then leave in October.
Can we ask General Yehan to see?
I disagree with that.
What do you think the impact is?
Well, not a very scientific answer. This is bubbling in my brain moment by moment, too. I think 50% of that 9% would be even conservative because we have a lot of other demand that we already know is coming for, for similarly priced properties. We have some major construction crews coming into town for that project that are going to be renting rooms on a contract basis, may even tip over the 30-day point and, and take those out of the TOT revenue stream. Don't know. You know, we don't know the full impact, but those, that's another factor to consider is that we're, we're competing with ourselves for those rooms during the same timeframe.
And you got, you got the rent, that's the D O N.
There was a conversation that we've had internally about rooms that are zoned for temporary occupancies that are used for periods longer than the temporary occupancy, longer than 30 days that the state law allows us to collect. But if, if the properties themselves, not that we don't want them to be used, we do, but might there be a way of, of collecting a TOT-like revenue from those for the privilege to use them for uses other than what they have been designated? Hotel properties, and this is, I don't have all the information, but we're going to take a look at that as, as internally with the planning director and others, and talk about, if you're taking properties from one use and you're changing it to another use, then maybe there's an opportunity to collect TOT-like revenue from those properties. And we're, we're going to look at that.
Or, or they come and get a CUP on every room that they, they're converting to, to over 30 days.
An interim CUP.
Because.
I, I'd watch out there because every rental in town would be, been subject to that. All the permanent rentals.
Okay, whatever. But, but we're losing a big revenue source by, by them converting. And it happened with the beach house, and we, you know, that's the first one. And anyway.
Yeah, we're at a very preliminary, but we're going to take a hard look at that just to see what opportunities exist.
And then that needs to be balanced for workforce housing. I mean, that's primarily what that's being rented out for, for long-term would be workforce housing. So if you try to discourage that, then you're adding to the workforce housing.
Yeah, actually, it's not discouraging it. What is it doing? It's conditionally allowing it. Where you take properties, for example, if you had a, a commercial piece that was zoned and you wanted to use it for residential use, maybe that wouldn't matter. But, but what we're just trying to look at some way to balance our revenue stream or to sustain our revenue stream and allow the use to go forward.
Right.
The state law speculars, you know, it's peculiar because it only allows TOT charged up to 30 days, and after 30 days, then it, you can't charge it. So maybe there's, maybe there's some opportunity that we'll look at.
Yes. I have been witness to in other communities, and it may be way too late in the Atwater process for this to, to add to the burden of this project, but where a property is going out of service, where part of the planning fees, we're paying some fees in lieu for, for what would be lost. So that's just one seed to potentially plant should we have this come up again. The other is I have seen, and I don't believe this was done by ordinance so much as policy of the individual properties where, I worked in a community where we had FEMA in town for, for close to a year and a half after a major flood. And they would honor the government rate for the FEMA officials, but they wouldn't rent to them for more than 28 days. They had to check out and check back in.
Good, very nice, yeah.
That's the way to do it, yeah.
Great, thank you, Jim. You got that down, Amanda?
Yeah.
So I did a quick calculation of Atwater, 50% of what they pay, I'm calculating to be, the 50% would be about $175,000.
Wow.
And I'll compare that to the host compliance with what we were projecting for additional revenue. It, it might be close to that.
So for now, when we kind of, not dispute, but when we discuss a change, we don't bother doing anything, like, we don't bother doing anything today with these numbers so that everything has to be re-added. We just make note kind of that.
We, we have to provide. We have to provide back to you. What Bob will do, I'm sure, is going to be evaluate what you have said. And then, and then if the numbers, and then how the number changes, how the revenue or the expenditure changes, well, then that will be brought back as part of, as part of a final or an amended version of a budget.
Yeah, I think that's up to you as city council, if you, if you want this information before it's adopted, or, or if you want to adopt and get the information later, it's up to you.
So, and let me ask on the rent, other revenue, the rental income. What is that? Rental income?
What line are you looking at?
It's about the 1/6 line down from page 18. Other revenue rental income.
I don't know what that is. I think it was something that was combined. I, I really don't know.
So I've been curious to.
I stopped budgeting for it because.
Oh, okay, so, so, so where is the, the revenue that we get from, where do we see the income from the unit that we rent from the sheriffs and the money we get from the marilla rental?
That might be that 6,000 because isn't that a $500 rental fee to the sheriffs?
Yeah, no, but I think you're saying they, well, it looks like they put it somewhere else. So, so under housing authority, you guess?
That's right, put it.
But not the cops?
No, not the cops.
So the cops money needs to be somewhere. And when can we discuss that rent? That we charge the sheriff?
You can schedule that item. I guess you could discuss it now, but if you would like us to, to get all, make sure we have all the facts, if we don't, then we can, we can bring it back for discussion.
I'd be curious to know what that rent is that we get from the sheriff's department and take a look at that.
And real is on the rental income.
I mean, I heard it was only $500 a month, but I have no idea. And maybe that would be the six, and so maybe they haven't been paying. Have they been paying?
I would have to look into that. I believe that it would all be a wash if, if we. I believe that it would all be a wash if, if we changed the amount that we charge for rent, then, then that would affect their contract with us.
Well, that's, and I think that's a fair assumption. I think there, though, I do know, or I've been told upon previous inquiry, that for those people, the fine people who serve us, that they get a bonus for being over here. It's about, I believe, 17%. So I assume without knowing, but we'll, we'll find out, is that that's for other higher expenses. So to the extent that that is for housing, then it maybe lends us toward looking at the issue of a.
I think we should look into it for sure.
Yeah, so, and what, does the contract say that we shall provide them housing for so and for that price?
I have not seen that in the contract.
If we don't, I think that's an insanely inexpensive amount of rent for two law enforcement officers. Okay.
Thank you.
And, okay, never mind. I'll stop on that for now.
Okay. The shoreboat subsidies under contract services?
The shoreboat would be under harbor.
On page 34, I think.
And contract services sounds right, but let me just, there's a.
Page 18, number three, I think.
Well, I'm looking at the detail.
Oh, okay.
What page are you on?
18, 34, I'm sorry, I can't.
Oh, 34.
You're on page 34, but where are you seeing that?
The number three, coming down the column, contract services.
Festicide, bleming and shower.
No, contract services general, it says.
Yes, that is shoreboat services.
Okay. Wanted to make sure.
What, where are you?
Go up to number.
Page 34 of the package.
Page 34, yeah.
Oh, the 240.
And it's in a new section, section three, contract services. It's the line below.
About a third way down, not, not the other third.
Oh, up there. Could we define that so it's, I mean, rather than it just be contractual services general? Can, can that have its own line item to say shoreboat subsidy?
Yes.
There's a clause associated.
I think it just, it would be easier to answer for the number of people I'm sure that are going to ask about it.
Sorry for the version.
No, that's, that's why we're here.
Is there, was there something in that contract thing that goes up every year? No.
There was an increase this year in the sheriff's contract. And help me here, I think it was 3% or was it 3%? I believe the sheriff's contract went up and it's, it's about within the, you know, 2.4% CPI, but there, so there was an increase in the sheriff's contract.
Okay. And in terms of the, the subsidy for the shoreboat, there's no CPI on that, right?
I don't recall one. I would have to look to be sure.
Well, I think it was, was it $236,000 was the contract? I think what they came in at? Wasn't it 236?
It was less than what you budgeted.
It was less than the 250.
I believe it was 236.
Yeah, okay.
It's close to 240. I rounded it up for, to the nearest $10,000.
Okay, to the cost of stamps. Okay.
If I may mention also, where there's, wherever there's vehicle purchases, what we're, be sure we're in line with what you want. What I'm telling staff is, departments is, you're going to order a vehicle, they're going to be electric vehicles unless they can't be. For example, electric fire truck might be, might be a problem. Electric lift, a major lift. So, so the idea being that we move toward your goal of reducing, you know, the carbon emissions. And I, and I know the other side of that, the other side is, but the electricity is produced. So we're looking at solar also, solar opportunities for buildings that we've discussed. We're, we're working with Edison, talking to Edison about what opportunities they might be able to, to using, using solar and, and in new housing that's going to be proposed. This is a little off the budget, whether it's at Las Casitas or at Upper Tremont, that that be, that we look at the opportunity for solar also there. So all those things are moving us toward the goals that you have for greening of our community.
Could you not cut out LPG for vehicles?
Oh, no, 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 yeah, that could be, no, yes, sir. Thank you. Thanks for that.
CRC is doing a good job with LPG.
A G M D, L M N O P. You threw on those last credits out.
We call it petroleum.
I knew I got that one and then you go CRC and D D.
Well, since, since we're having a productive meeting on the, on the detail, are there other things in the detail that you had questions about?
I, I know I have lots of questions that are all over the board. You know, and I'm sure we all kind of do, you know? So I don't know how we start. I mean, is every department going to come? You have your goals really well laid out and I appreciate that. I don't see any goals for anybody else. And I don't know how you can put, people can put together a budget without having a written explanation of their goal. If things increase or decrease or whatever. So, so, and, and again, it goes back to accountability, like I was saying with yours. We have something to truly hold you accountable at the end of your year. This is what you've done. With the other folks, it's just, here's my budget stuff, but I don't know what I'm going to do with this money. I mean, so it, so, you know, and it's easy for me to talk to community services and say, okay, what are you doing different? What are your, what aren't you able to do because of this budget? So we can make decisions, I want to do fire department, what are your goals? Harbor, what are your goals? You know, because if without goals, without goals, I don't.
We, we did not formally prepare anything like that for today. I, I prepared, what I prepared on our goals just because they were related towards the budget and what to expect as far as what this budget, budget contains, but what I'd like to, for it to contain in future presentations as far as long-term planning, et cetera.
I mean, I don't think that's your responsibility, but I think somebody, you had, y'all had budget meetings and you talked about numbers based on something. And I guess it would, it should, could have been just as easy, and I've been asking for this every year, is that kind of information? Because you can't have accountability in departments if you don't know what they're going to be doing. And if, even if it's business as usual, what's business as usual? The community also wants to know what people will be doing in this next fiscal year. You know, for example, okay, and I'm not going to, okay, and maybe this is where we talk, because I got a lot of stuff. The impound yard is taken off of this. Okay, for three years, we've been talking about this. This is something that supposedly we're not in compliance because we don't have an impound yard.
Well, well, we have an interim solution that, that it, that, that is to, they've cleaned out up at the corporation yard, equipment that's been sitting there for years and they're in that process. And that what the director of public works has said is that if there are vehicles on Tremont that have been sitting there for three and four weeks or five weeks, that we can tow those vehicles up to the corporation yard. And, and, but, but that they can't stay there for another four or five years, that there has to be part of the plan is to get them either destroyed and off the island or salvaged in some way so that it doesn't, they themselves don't become a burden. The other thing with an impound yard is.
Wait, and I am sorry because I'm on a totally different impound yard.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I, and maybe I've looked at the wrong, the dog thing.
Oh, the dogs, yeah. We have, we have money in the budget for a, I think there's.
There's $10,000 for a dog park, but, but.
We reduced it, we had it at 15,000 because when we researched how much it would cost us to do it, that originally we had put 30 or 35 in it and then we got a couple different prices.
So that's in here to go forward?
Yes, it's in the budget too, to do that.
Sometimes it's easier to, our pet projects, to say, is it here or is it not?
Well, we could certainly.
Looking through 40,000.
Yeah, we, you make an excellent point, Mayor. And what, what we can do is each department, the, the budget was a collaborative effort at departments. After they made their initial, we were about $2.5 to $3 million out of balance. So the director, staff went back to the departments and said, how do you, what can you do to help us balance this budget? And they came up, but that narrative you need, you want on, by department, here's what we're doing, here's what we couldn't do, but, and we can, we will.
I mean, and you've heard them say that because you've been through the budget process. So when you go to do evaluations, you will know. But I don't know some.
No, I, no, I think you make an excellent point. You make an excellent point. And when, and now to say, besides making an excellent point, each department then will be asked to come forward and they already have this information, but just put it in a narrative that you can use.
Just line, just blow up.
Yeah, I think that's important because, for example, in recreation and community services, so hypothetically, we're going to finish the mole park, we're going to establish two additional green spaces in town, we're going to, you know, upgrade Joe Machado Field by XYZ. Like these, these are the things that, like the community wants to see. The fire department's going to replace this or do this or upgrade this or we're going to, you know, additional training. You know, I think what's been important for everybody on this council is to see additional training of our staff, that, ooh, you okay?
Yes.
Ow, it's not very funny, is it? It's the funny bone that's not funny.
Funny.
So for, for us even in making policy, it helps us to say, okay, so, so we've adopted your goal, once you guys have agreed to your goals and they've gone through, then we adopt those as part of the policy and then that helps us to make better decisions as the year goes on. So you guys may have already done all of that process.
Understood, no.
Just that one page for us would help us go through.
Good advice, we'll get that to you in the next few days.
And I'm in favor of more green spaces, by the way.
Let, if I may, just on the green and we.
Fake green spaces.
It's okay, it's still parks.
It's beautiful.
It's still great.
There's a lot of great things going on. Community services doing some real great things along with public works and upgrading the appearance of facilities. What will be instructive and is in your budget and which should be in a narrative when we bring it to you is that, is to take a look, a look at the entire city and say, what are the, what are the, what are the types of programs, what types of facilities? Where should there be attention? We're doing the major mole project. How does that affect, how does that affect the park area there and what, what could it be, should it be? And we need to, so that's, and then that master plan, as it is in the harbor, it is at the sewer plant, that becomes the guide that you've adopted. And you'll say, oh yeah, this is in accordance with that plan. And, and that's the job that we still have to do for you in that planning.
And then let me just add before I lose that train of thought that we, prior to our current public works, we, Dennis J H had created this 10-year capital improvement plan that is sort of the goals for, and it's the goals for public works and what's going to happen infrastructure-wise. And I know that that, that's a revolving document that changes over time. And I know that, Bobby, you've even added to that already, but that is the public works sort of plan and goals too. So we have that, but we don't have it from these other departments.
Well, well stated and they're certainly capable and will provide that information to you right away. Get that right.
And where we stopped when I was, after the grants, the next step was going to go through the capital projects and I was going to go through some of the larger capital projects which might address some of your questions as far as what we're planning to do. With. As far as capital expenditures go, do you want to go through that? And, and I think that then if you have questions about some of these larger projects, you know, for instance, public works, you know, Bob would be able to answer some questions and, and informally perhaps.
Yeah.
Answer some of your questions rather than a, a document of, of goals. Would you like to do that?
I see our little dog park, that's good. So, so there was a discussion about, so, and maybe it will go in here again, there's a lot, but, and it's, and it's kind of a safety issue as well. That front street of town is extremely hot and people are, everywhere they can find shade, they are trying to sit. And because of global warming and the ill effects of the sun, it would be nice to have some kind of additional shade so that people aren't sitting out in the sun all day long. And then that results in somebody putting up an umbrella in front of their place to help them out and then whoops, but you can't put an umbrella out in front of your place. And everybody's sitting in the front of the Avalon Grill eating their ice cream because they can't, they can't get out of the sun. And then the ice cream melts and then you got dirty sidewalks. So if we could have, look into, but it would have to be what everybody wants, but I think that some, whether there's those shade things or more polyp type things or whatever, because if you look at the beach, the majority of those people are now sitting under umbrellas. You know, not in the old days where we wanted to fry ourselves. I think people are a little more conscious of the sun and so I don't know if that's something that.
So maybe even like shade sails between the, between the trees, kind of like what?
Yeah, yeah. Something, I don't know. And, and I don't know, it's just something I would like to see, but I don't know about the rest.
Would the council, if you, if that's something you want us to look at, we can, we can certainly take a look at shade, what, shade, shade sails?
Shade sails.
Shades.
Yeah, they, like they tie, but we, very similar to what's above Kenaby Park, they, they appear that way. Those ones are, are permanent. Shade sails, for example, could just be.
For crescent, for.
Could be wired around or something. You know, just, that's just one option, please don't.
Is that the council?
But there's a lot of different, different things out there, but.
No, no, I don't think we need that. Really?
I think there's places in town that we could use shade, yeah.
That could use shade?
Yeah.
And just see what that, then maybe just work up what it costs would be and just a couple of little places. I mean, truly, I would like to see tables and chairs down there too, so that people can get their food and eat at a picnic table and, but.
Well, you know, Mayor, what, what's happened over the, over the year, and this goes back to policy again, is that you've had people, for example, at one business near, near Whitley, which we'll go unnamed, but you know, you mentioned it, they, they put up umbrellas, but they need certain permits in order to do so. And then without policy, we're not informed on what, whether, whether they can or not, we have issues then where there's obstructions. Is it safe passage? And so we probably need, as we look at this, is to look at some general guidance to us to make sure that what we do, we don't allow pop-up, pop, I learned that, we don't allow pop-ups in the downtown, but we need to codify something. So, so we're guided by, oh yeah, you can put up a shade, sombra or, not a sombra, a shade. And so we probably need a policy too about that, so that something can obstruct the pathway, that it won't interfere with fire response or police response.
Exactly. And I don't know if it's just easier if we pay for it and then, or give everybody the thing, whatever, whatever, you can come up with that. Okay, let me just ask, trash cans?
They're in the budget.
Yeah.
Okay. $50,000 or so?
$5,000.
$5,000?
$5,000?
Big Billy trash bins.
We've got to talk about trash cans. It's, we've been trying to get those for like years now.
Don't we have a grant that's coming? Don't we have a grant? Yeah, I thought we did.
$5,000, that's going to buy about three trash cans.
Now we get to talk trash. We, we do.
So Jordan Monroe, sorry, it's in my phone here. He wrote a grant and we were, through Cal Recycle, and I want to say it was for.
50.
$50,000. It's a pretty substantial grant. Jordan's working on the grant agreement right now. I think some more of those big bellies are, are a goal because they're working really well. So, and I, I think there's a small match.
Oh, so maybe that.
So, so trash cans are on the forefront.
Yep.
Just, just so you guys know.
Do we know how much they cost each?
The big bellies were about seven grand each, I believe. We bought two of them, so we could buy quite a few more for $50,000.
Seven.
Yeah, there you go, good. Yeah, so you guys, the math, you're doing the math in your head.
You still need the convenience of small ones somewhere. Because you can't, you can't, you sure as heck couldn't get rid of every trash can in town and just put up, have nine big bellies.
So I think, you know, we, we have some funds that we're to use. It's whether we want to go with more big bellies or, or just volume here. And I don't think that today we're ready to talk about that because we've got to bring some numbers to you and say, here's the potential with two more big bellies and it's going to cost $15,000. Or here we could go 20 other trash cans and here would be the locations. I think so that'll be a little bit longer. little bit longer discussion.
What we need to do is improve the quality of the trash cans that we have.
Absolutely.
Which means we're replacing like 40 or 50 trash cans right now.
Because he, Denise, you probably know, how many trash cans does he empty?
Oh boy.
A hundred and something, right?
The original contract set up to 200 of them, but I, it's, had decreased, so.
Yeah, so.
150 plus.
First thing we need to do is, is switch out some of the older, dilapidated ones and, and get the new ones in there, I mean, these, these neat recyclable ones, I, you know, I think they're great and everything, but, what, what can we get, seven of them? We need, we need 50, 60, 80 more new trash cans now, and then maybe a couple of those.
I believe that's what Jordan's working on right now, is not to pursue two additional big bellies, but to work on what could be, you know, the design of those new trash cans.
And it's something we've needed year after year after year after year, it's, it's, it's been an ongoing battle, I mean, and it's a battle, because I've raised hell about it a few times, and, and it just doesn't change, it's trash all over the ground, it flows into the ocean, and it's just a redundant thing that goes on year after year after year, okay, then Eddie makes a couple new ones, we put a couple new lids here and there, and then we're back to where we started a couple months later.
Could we get an update to the, if the council wishes, we can get, we'll get an update on this grant and what, what, kind of what we're looking at at our meeting, or your following meeting, your next meeting?
Okay.
Thanks, thank you, sir.
And that, that's an example of things that are happening throughout the budget process, and, and that grant is not included in this budget, but if we achieve that grant, as Audra said, the batch is minimal, and that would be something that we'd come to the City Council later on.
I think the point though, too, is, that was made, is that if, if, if we get the grant, of course, then we're to the good by some amount of money, if we don't, though, then maybe we need to look at another option, that replacing dilapidated, deteriorated, rusting on the bottom, when you lift them up and the trash falls out, get trash cans, we need to, we need to do that maybe on a more, if, and, and we'll give you an update on that at your next council meeting, which is a week from tomorrow, I believe.
There's a golf cart here, is this a replacement golf cart, or a new one?
That, that would be a new one, that was for Recreation, new as an additional, not necessarily new.
The bicycle, it has flat tires all the time, I think, but.
Just, if we're trying to discourage people, and we're trying to control the number of golf carts in town, are we providing the right picture to our citizens?
Or are we getting the right kind of.
Is this a replacement golf cart, or is this an additional?
Well, you know, we did have a golf cart that was blue and nice, and it, and then DMV told us we couldn't register it, and so it's now up at the, we can only drive it near the, at this Joe Machado Field, that was in play before, we don't have that golf cart for general use or use in the evening, right, for Rec, for Community Services?
Correct, so it would be primary for the Recreation Department, we've got a new part-time position that is in the field, in the parks, first thing in the mornings, he's using his old cart, it would give him an opportunity to use that cart, and then just have access to another cart for general use for the, the staff here as well.
Is the one you can put stuff in the back and that kind of thing?
That would be the idea, yes, and electric for sure.
And, and like a pickup golf cart, I mean, where you can put crap in it.
Uh, we're trying to keep electrics, or kind of work with, yeah, with what we, what we can, but yeah, it would be utility.
Okay.
Yes.
But didn't Recreation Department have one of those, Carl Carson used to have, or was that a Public Works one?
I believe that was Public Works.
Oh.
And, one of Joe Machado.
Where is it now?
Yeah, yeah.
Carl has it wherever he is.
Get it back from Carl.
What?
No.
Oh, okay. A mower?
And just to repeat, the answer for the public is that the golf cart that was in question was not a street legal golf cart, and then, Jordan, did you have any questions for Jordan about the trash? Cans, or, no?
No, if you just want to give us a little overview, that'd be great, Jordan.
Sure, a couple of years ago, we put in for a Cal Recycle Beverage Container Recycling Grant, to put in beverage container recycling bins, not trash bins, recycling bins only. We put in for a little over $140,000 grant, to put in 100 new recycle bins from Avaloni Point out to Casino Way, currently, there are about 100 there, so we would be doubling the numbers we have, the idea being that we'd have one trash and one recycling coupled together at all times in each location, so basically, we'd say, okay, we have 100, let's double at least what we have there, and we have clearly branded trash, clearly branded recycling, and so, we were awarded the grant, but due to the California budget, they deferred us until fiscal year 1718, and they had to wait and see how much of the budget California adopted, to see how much we'd get awarded. We just got notice last week that we are awarded the full amount.
Good, wow.
And so, we've got the $146,000, they've sent us our budget to see if we have any amendments to it, we included money for design and review of trash cans, an educational PR campaign, which is required of the grant, the implementation of itself, and then the tracking of how many beverage containers we divert, so we have a lot of components to get into place, but we're ready to go, we've got the design element waiting, but we just can't spend any money until we get the notice to proceed, I submitted our revised budget, which is pretty much the same, back to Cal Recycle, and so as soon as it gets the notice to proceed, which we expect within the next week, we can start executing that and getting those underway, so, I'd hope, it's going to be a little bit of a process getting the bins designed, the educational materials started, get it approved by Cal Recycle, and implemented, so I think by the end of the year, at the very latest, we should have new bins starting to hit our streets. The good idea from there is, once we have these design standards and this whole system set up, then we can use that moving forward, anytime we need to replace a trash can, anytime we have any maintenance issues, we have all of that information already in place, and so then we don't have any questions or issues moving forward.
That's great, thank you, that was great news.
Very good.
Very good.
Very exciting.
Thank you for working on that, that's awesome.
It's a no-match grant.
Yay!
That's kind of my gift.
You had a question, council member, about the mower?
I'm sorry?
You had a mower question, did it?
Yeah, mower.
A mower?
Your fire, $5,000 mower.
Oh, mower, yeah, I was like, a mower.
Well, we have a cemetery that's, that, that people were mowing with, with literally something you would use on a small lawn, a hand mower, which is very labor-intensive, and my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the mower would be more suited to a large area to mow, would reduce time of mowing, thus freeing up person power to do other things, and that, is that, is that correct?
Is this like a riding lawnmower?
Yep.
So, we can't get, we have an existing mower that we are using at Joe Machado Field, which we need a surplus, okay, and it still has pretty high value, and so it may end up just being a swap, we're evaluating that right now, we can't use that mower within the cemetery, because the way all the memorials are set up, and so, whether it be a riding mower, or something, they have also mowers that are self-propelled, but they also have a trailer that you stand up and ride behind for commercial properties, so we're looking at that right now, but it may end up where it's almost even swap, but we don't know all of that yet, so, that's why there's a request for a small budget on that, to purchase that.
So I was thinking on the capital projects, that we could look at just some of the large dollar items, keeping in mind that this $30 million budget, and not to.
And then what, they, on the deferments.
Don't go there yet.
Oh.
Let's go with the, the stuff that's in the budget, because I got a couple of questions on those too.
Okay.
So the, one of the large items was the laser fish, that's in process, that was brought to City Council a couple months ago, and that's being implemented in this month and next month. The Joe Machado Field, the $120,000, that's the, the debt payment.
That, that goes to '22, Bob, is it '22?
2023.
23.
We received a grant for additional improvements at, at Joe Machado, so that's what that $80,000 is. Going down, further down the page, we have the Pebbley Beach Rip Rap Restoration, we received authorization from the California Office of Emergency Services earlier this calendar year for restoration of the rip rap from the 2014 storm, and we need to have that completed by 2019. But that's primarily, that's 82% funded by, by the Department of OES.
Bob, just as a question, does that on the, on the, on the roadside, the Pebbley Beach Road?
The, the ocean side.
The ocean side, and is that then the consideration of the cliff area, or no? No, and that's, so that is going to be something we're going to have to look at, what, how do we secure that area, that, that'll be, we'll, we'll have Audra tasked, I guess, find us a grant, Audra.
The $540,000 for paving, that's left over from the prior, from the, after all the sewer and saltwater work that, that started, that's what that $540,000 is, the paving for that, that's paid through the street funds that we received by, from the gas tax.
And is there also part of this project and the repaving, there, is Edison going to be participating in some of the expense of that, from fixing some of their street digs and whatnot?
That was the original plan, but, and Bob, maybe.
Yeah, after we get done, then they'll, participating, they've already submitted some funds over the years, but they'll be participating with some of the additional spots that we're paving, but also for when you raise the valves, put concrete around them, those will be per each, and they've added a number of those, so we should also receive reimbursement for those.
Great.
There is an understanding on that.
Great, thank you.
Going to the next page of the capital projects, that $250,000 is a contingency for, it's related to property taxes received by the redevelopment agencies, and.
Question.
The $250,000 is the estimated settlement for that, it represents taxes that the redevelopment agency received, and the city, along with many other cities in LA County and, and Long Beach area, tried to argue that the funds should come from the redevelopment fund, however, it was, they, they provided some financial models showing that if, if the funds were paid through the redevelop, the successor agencies of the redevelopment agencies, that the cities as an end result would get less property taxes over and above the, the settlement amount, that it was a win-win situation for all parties to have, have it come out of the city's fund, rather than the redevelopment fund, so that, that's what that $250,000 is, and we've involved BBK with that, and they're, they're helping us with that, but the, there's also another attorney that's handling the case overall. Pier piling replacement, that was targeted for last, for the prior year budget, no work was done in the prior year, so that's a carryover from the prior, the pier pilings need to, need some work. The $266,000 pump, pump-out facility, that's a new grant that was just applied, we, we applied for that within the last month or so, and the, that's to replace, or to renovate the pump-out facility. The mole substructure and the mole upper structure, those are both projects we've been talking about for the last couple of years, and this is to initiate those projects. There's some ongoing discussions for the field dock completion, and that's just a contingency amount for 200,000. The 105,000 for the fuel float, that's a carryover from the prior year also, I believe that that's almost complete, we just need the fuel dispensers, correct? The next several items are just the global CIP infrastructure, finishing up prior year's work, and then also providing for another half million dollars for new work on the sewer infrastructure, nothing specific has been identified yet for the sewer project. And the landfill closure fee, I'm putting that as a project, just because it's not typical operations, but that's, a hundred thousand dollars per year goes into our trust fund for anticipated costs for land, land fee closure, landfill closure.
And as I mentioned on this, not only is there a closure, but then there's a reopening that we're going to have to look at, and see what, A, the site might be, or how we're going to handle after closure, what the existing site would be used for, could be used for once it is closed, and then what would be a new site, and what would the cost estimated be to, to have a site on, on island, or are we going, unless there's some thought that you could transport it to somewhere, I don't know, you could transport trash, so, all of that, we're going to have to take a look at this year.
And those last four items on the list are not coded to a general ledger account for capital improvements, but for maintenance and operations that I just wanted to highlight, and that's the Coastal Commission, local coastal plan update, remodeling of the Public Works Office and Planning Storage of $40,000, generator for the wastewater treatment plant, and also some heating and ventilation for the sewer wastewater treatment plant. Any other, any questions on the capital projects that are planned for this year? Nope? Deferred, these items are items that were removed from our budget for this fiscal year in order to balance it, and to ensure that we have sufficient operating cash available, and open to any questions on those deferrals.
So they're really not, well, deferrals, some of them are just a reduction.
Yes.
So that would have been nice, maybe to just put them up with the ones that we're going to fund, but, but we're funding them at a lesser amount, you know, just a comment. So, legal expenses, so.
If you could describe where you're looking?
Oh, down under legal expenses, Administration 11830, about a third of the way down the page.
Got it.
Reduced by $100,000, so are we, okay, I'm assuming we're talking BB and K?
Yeah. Well, no, that would.
Or is that, what is that?
It could be, but that line item, Fund 118 is our fund for general insurance and general liability, there, historically, we've had $100,000, a placeholder in there in case. general liability. There, historically, we've had $100,000, a placeholder in there in case something unexpected comes up. But we, in that fund, I'm gonna, you don't have to flip back there, but looking back at the projected fund balance, for insurance, we have $600,000 balance in our insurance fund, and I feel that that's sufficient, and that can be utilized if something unexpected happens. So we have $600,000 in our Fund 118, and I'm taking away that $100,000, I'm taking away that $100,000 contingency.
Okay, and I believe I saw on the attorney's fees, an increase, so now it's like $515,000 is that what we're budgeting for them?
We're budgeting 515, that's up 15,000 from the prior year.
And how, do we know projecting out the rest of, do we know what are, what we paid over the last year?
Yes, we do. It was approximately $502,000.
Okay.
What we are doing, working with the city attorney, working with our department leaders and staff, is before engaging the city attorney's office, you know, at $280 an hour, we're doing a lot of the base work ourselves, and then running it by, if you will, or if there are points where we need legal advice. For example, on business points in dealing with Upper Tremont or the Las Casitas Project, rather than having a special counsel sitting in on meetings where you're talking about, do you want to do this or that, we'll wait till we get business points in draft, then we'll have the legal counsel review it, so it reduces the amount of time that they have to spend, and makes their time more meaningful when we do ask them to spend, that we've done our homework as staff, and they are working with us, we are working with them, our department leaders are working with them, and I think that the net will be that, that we won't see a rise in costs. When you look at the amount that we spend on legal fees, given the complicated systems that we have in place here in Avalon, all the regulatory issues and so on, we'll, it is, it seems like a lot, but, and we will reduce to, we will work to reduce it, but it's, it's the nature of the beast in today's world and in this regulatory environment that we work in.
So, so another question is, is that, there's no other legal fees scattered throughout, like some in planning and whatever, it's only in that one line item?
No. BBK is allocated throughout, depending on what they're working on, so if they're working on sewer, it goes to the sewer fund, if they're working on-
Right, but for the sake of the budget, it's only one line item. It's only the 515.
No, I had that as a comment, I think you read that in a comment on variances, perhaps.
So I guess-
There isn't a line item for 515 for legal fees. There was a comment I wrote on the variances.
Okay, so I, okay, so my question is, bottom line, what do we have budgeted throughout all the departments for legal fees?
515 for BBK, and then we do have other legal fees that are related to insurance issues, insurance claims. We include that as, we have an SIR, self-insured retention, which is like a deductible, and that $25,000 is used towards that. So as far as direct legal fees, we really only use BBK.
Okay. And then, is there a number in there, so I don't have to look, that says how much of those fees do we project are reimbursed through the planning process or whatever else, as revenue?
When there are projects, when there are projects that we are processing, for example, one might be the Las Casitas Project, then, or if it's a development agreement, or the development of Las Casitas, that by a pre-agreement, and we'll be bringing an amended agreement, that those costs for legal services are to be reimbursed by the, by the company, it would be in this case. If there's a development project that's going forward, that requires legal work, then by agreement, we're supposed to be billing them and then reimbursing. Now, and again, it's not that the company or any other developer is, it's not their attorney, it's our cost that we're billing to them, so they're still working for us, but we're just billing them.
The legal fees in general come out to about 2% of the total budget, roughly, roughly? 2%? Legal fees in general are about 2% of the total budget, roughly. Is that standard?
I haven't researched that, I don't know.
I can tell you in other cities that I've been, I've worked in different, some complicated, Tahoe probably is complicated, here as here, is that the amount that we pay on contract its attorney fees is not out of line in relationship because of the complicated regulatory things that we are dealing with. The programs that you're, like with the housing authority programs, affordable housing, Las Casitas Development Agreement, it's really not out of line. I haven't done a study in some years, it's been about 10 maybe that we did the last time, but I, now, do we want to still contain costs without being risky? Yes, and we're working on containing.
But I get, and I get, my simple question is, so they reimburse us for expenses?
Yes, we're, yes.
And I guess, how is that reflected?
It's on page 17 of the budget package. And it is near the, it's about a little over, around 12 lines up, called Planning Fees-
Consultant?
For $60,000.
Right, okay, so?
And then we have an expense to offset that, that'd be approximately 80% of that number, because we add 20% for administrative overhead.
Okay.
And what, and of course, in the end, this is the best, our best estimate today.
Oh, I get it, sure.
Yeah, and there'll be, you'll see, in the housing authority side, you will see more expense as we move toward implementation of your affordable housing project up in Upper Tremont, you'll see more costs in, on that side, with funds that could be used for no other purpose than that cost. So, so it's our best guess, and-
No, I just, because, you know, the public still continually says we seem to be paying too much for attorney fees, and that's just kind of what they say. But again, some of those costs are reimbursed, and I think that's an important thing for people to know, that it's-
And it's significantly lower than what it was a few years ago. I know we were up in the $700,000 range for several years in a row, so it's significantly less than that.
I think that's part of the community discussion as well, is that, you know, our legal fees were X, Y, Z, and then all of a sudden they went up for a couple of years, and now we're getting them back down. So I think, you know, that's, I would be curious to know what the standard is, as far as a percentage of budget, or a percentage of, and I don't know if that's something that's even possible. I don't want it to be significant work in any way, but-
The League of Cities, League of California Cities has a library, probably, and I think when I did the original research 10 years ago, on looking at ins, in and out attorneys or the cost of legal fees, I think I used a lot of information from them. So we'll research that using the league information, and-
Yeah, I don't want to add significant work to staff, I'm just, I think it's important.
I think it'd be very easy, that's gotta be a common question, so.
Yeah, and again, I think we have to look at comparative agencies. For example, Avalon being in where we are, on an ocean and an island, with complicated regulatory, probably is more akin to what another complicated regulatory coastal community, or maybe like Tahoe even, because of the intertwined governmental regulatory bureaucratic structures that exist.
Yeah, why can't we just take like three other cities that are comparable to ours, and figure out, maybe six, you know, three of them in-house, you gotta check, check it out to see if an in-house attorney would be more expensive, and then, and then, and then take three, three cities that have a hired hand like BBK is to us. I think you should be able to get a good idea of what we're dealing with. We have some complex issues.
Sure do. That's what makes it so much fun for us, it keeps us.
Are we, we're still going down the deferred and reduced?
I was just opening up for questions for any of the items that were deferred or reduced or omitted.
The mall re-substructure grant, the grant must be completed by August of 2019. How come we're deferring this project?
Bob?
That's a Bob Greenlaw question.
We're not deferring it, it's just the cash flow, that's why I'm showing you, so it's, all the cash flow's not in this one fiscal year. The construction's when the majority of the cash flow happens, and then that's in the next fiscal year. So that's, it's just realigning it.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Okay, perfect. And then, on the, the green pier hoist replacement, I thought that was already, that was already approved-
I don't know.
From last year, from 1617?
It was included in the budget last year, but there's been no-
No movement on it?
No movement on that, and so we're including it this year because, well, we're deferring it. We've seemed to have, have operated without it, but perhaps JJ can talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, the large green hoist on the pier, it's, it's at the point now where it uses minimal use, just due to the fact of the substructure and the way it's bolted to the pier. It, I can't even tell you how old that, how old it is, but we've installed a smaller hoist next to it to be able to lift our ramps, just because we put a limit of, you know, 200 pounds that we're concerned about, so we just haven't had an opportunity to go in, lift it out, and pull it out. We kinda want to do it when we do the pier placement, replacement, because we have to put another piling, yeah, the pilings in there. So, but it's, you know, hopefully it still stays in the budget, and hopefully we can get it, get it done.
Okay. And then, I know Chief Krag isn't here, but I'm a little bit concerned about deferring money going into the fire truck replacement fund. Can you elaborate on why we're deferring?
Well, we don't have a fire truck replacement fund per se, but we do have the vehicle, vehicle maintenance fund, and you don't need to flip back, but I'll just report out to you on the, on the vehicle maintenance and replacement fund, I've, I've, we're increasing that by about $74,000, so we have, that fund is at $550,000 right now for the vehicle replacement fund, and if we had to replace a fire truck, that's the fund that would be used to purchase that.
Let me add, if I may, Councilmember, that one of the, one of the goals with the development impact fees is to have a, they're both a facilities and a, and a vehicle, capital vehicle fund, that, that new development can pay its share, and one of the, one of the subcategories in that would be major pieces of equipment, fire equipment, it would, might be a major lift that was needed for the Public Works Department for operations in the air. And, and so, the idea is to, is to fund, help fund replacement through those development impact fees in the categories that I alluded to. Are, we cut out our additional code enforcement guy? I really think this town needs an additional code enforcement guy. Let me, let me, let me mention what you had, and Denise may want to add in, but let, what I understand is that you had budgeted a half-time. The likelihood that someone is going to quit a job, to take a half-time job, it may happen, but, but it likely would not happen. We talked about preliminarily about having a full-time position in code enforcement. What we're also talking about is having, we've talked about, we've looked at the numbers at a full-time building inspector. Now, I haven't had completed conversations here, but, you know, people do cross-train things. We're paying about $126,000 for, and I'm gonna come back to code, but I'm gonna link it, for, for a part-time building inspector, part-time, few days a week, that's here. Good, good service, good guy. If you could bring on someone full-time, it's, it's about $30,000 to $40,000, $30,000 less than what we are now paying for part-time. Now, so that's $30,000 savings over here, and in addition, if a building inspector, there's no reason, in my opinion, that a building inspector who may not be busy every day could not also assist in code enforcement. And so the idea would be to, to, ultimately to hire a full-time building inspector, and would have other assigned duties, as all we all do, that could include code enforcement. Ideally, though, you're right, we should have a, a third code enforcement officer, which is about, what is the cost, Denise?
Eighty thousand.
About 80,000. So, but, but there's, potentially, there's a savings from the contracted of about 40, that from contracted building inspector, there's about a $40,000, $30,000 to $40,000 savings if we went to full-time. Now, so, so we certainly could look, look at how-
Well, do we have any idea how much revenue code brings in in fines and penalties?
That's a good question.
Do we have that number?
Yeah, we, the net-
Or the gross?
Let me see if I can find the detail, rather than guessing. I believe the net after our expenses are around $90,000.
So another, so, and we're spending 160 plus on two already?
I want the detail on that.
Right, so?
But Annie, you gotta remember that the code, is it just to bring in the citations and the revenue?
I understand.
Because they're, okay.
I do, but, but it, but it does, I mean, but-
Oh, absolutely, but we-
Right.
It will never be balanced because of all the other stuff that doesn't bring in the revenue.
Oh, everything else they have to do, and that's just it. It's everything else they have to do, and having to do all those other things sometimes make it so they can't get the stuff that's income generating, you know, because they're on an animal call, or they're, or everything else they do, which is pretty incredible. I'd be curious, if Stephanie is out in the audience, and she said she was gonna be listening, how many people applied for that part-time code enforcement job? Because I-
I think we actually advertised it as a full-time, anticipating that we were going to request it full-time.
Didn't it start part-time at one time?
Maybe last year?
We advertised for part-time first, then we advertised for full-time, and we might have received five or six applicants.
Okay, 'cause-
And then we were on hold because of the budget.
Right, 'cause some people, and I don't know, and Denise, I'd like your input too, but I mean, some people work two jobs, a lot of people work two jobs. This job at part-time pays more than some jobs do at full-time. You know, I know they probably wouldn't get the benefits, but it's, has to be 30, how many hours before they get benefits? Thirty-two?
Thirty.
Thirty? So, I don't know, it's, I think, now, if we could get the promise from, and see some results from the Sheriff's Department getting involved and actually doing code work, even if they just did it on Catalina and Sumner, those days when the, I mean, if they just made those sweeps, if we had their cooperation, if we used Jesse Moore out at the mall to do more, if the harbor was willing to help him do some of that, I mean, if everybody truly pitches together, we probably wouldn't need a full-time person. But I think until we get that commitment from people, I think we need one. Until we get people well-trained that, that whoops, you're not supposed to park here then, and whatever, and, and when we continue, hopefully soon, to work on parking, oh my God, are we gonna need code then? Because we're gonna be retraining every, you know, depending on what we come up with, we're gonna be retraining, like if you have to park in your driveway, if you have off-street parking. Just that alone is going to be a burden. And so, I don't know exactly what I'm pushing for. I mean, I would really like to see a full-time code, better utilization of what we have out there, but I don't know that we can get that commitment.
Why don't we put a full-time code guy and just net him out? He's offset by the income he generates. So there's no negative effect to the budget.
Well, the total revenue generated, I found it, it's on page 19. Well, the total revenue generated, I found it, it's on page nineteen of the budget packet. It's under streeted, uh, street administration. It's near the bottom, it says, uh, traffic administration fines. And we're budgeting sixty thousand dollars as, as the total revenue. That sixty thousand dollars is net of our outside costs for, um, the citation processing that we pay. So the, it's around ninety thousand dollars, and we pay about thirty thousand dollars to outside agencies to process those citations. So I don't think we would have, unless we change our, our policies and our practice, we, we wouldn't see a significant increase in, in revenue.
Would you like us to come up to the podium and make your?
Well, we can raise the cost of a parking ticket.
It's forty-one dollars right now.
Audra said we could raise the price of a parking ticket.
And I create a lot of parking tickets.
Well, that's, that's solved the problem right there.
And we thank you. But Ole's got a number in his hand.
Well, right, right now, according to my quick calculation, we issue about six tickets a day. Cause we issue about twenty-two hundred tickets a year at forty-one dollars a ticket. I'm fairly confident we could walk downtown right now and find a significant number of illegally parked cars. But we don't have the manpower to do that, because they're not taking care of the dogs, they're taking care of all other stuff. And I think if we had a dedicated code enforcement person, he could, probably would earn enough money. And then he could also be a diversion to people driving downtown, and stuff like that. Cause I don't drive downtown, cause I don't want a ticket.
Let me add to your thought there, if I may, Mayor. With the savings on a full-time building inspector that you would have, that's, say, thirty thousand from a full-time versus a contract that we're currently paying. Um, and there's a reason why it's higher, because it's called a bill rate versus what you pay the individual. The company has to make money too. Uh, and then, using Mr. Olson's analogy, you had someone that was concentrated in the downtown who would be generating additional revenue, um, from parking, that you, you would be much, you would, you could be closer to a full-time position. So that, that, that might work, that might balance.
Well, and does Mr. Greenlaw and everybody kinda feel like we should have a full-time building inspector as well?
Well, I, I, I think what you can get for, if you can get, you're, we're paying a hundred and twenty-six thousand for part-time, and we, if we could, if, and this is the if, cause I understand at one time they'd gone out before, if you could get a full-time building inspector for the, an amount less than what you're paying part-time, that I think would be a good net revenue thing.
Full-time building inspector would be under the planning director.
Right.
Okay. But, uh, just seeing the volume that we're going through right now, and being out there onsite myself in our public right-of-way, uh, seeing what activities going on in the commercial, and also in the private development, it, it, it's needed at right now to make sure that, um, our buildings are safe. And that we're getting the appropriate spec, inspections that everybody expects of a municipal agency.
Well, I even know, if, if there was a building, somebody that sat out at the mall, or out at the, out on freight service and watched the, uh, water heaters come in, that, that their people aren't getting permits for. You know, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's slipping through the cracks, and a lot of things get done when the guys not, when we don't have an inspector, I understand that as well.
And we've heard of those reports also, Mayor, uh, that, uh, about activity on days when the building inspector is not here, people at times operating without permits, or, or saying they're doing one thing and then doing another. And of course, that may trigger fire sprinkler, um, requirements and so on, so.
And would we require that that person live on island full-time?
Well, e- everyone should, um, should, to the extent that it's financially feasible, I guess, live here where they work. And that, that's the, that's the, that's the goal, I think.
I mean, I, because coming in on the six o'clock boat and then leaving on the three-thirty, you still have slippage and whatever else you wanna call that. And just being around and walking around and see what happens on a Saturday is pretty interesting as well. Okay, what else will we owe?
Is it your, is, is it a consensus of the council that you want us to pursue, uh, an additional or to add back in the code enforcement officer, based on the conversation that Count, the Mayor Protem made about additional revenue, and the fact that with a full-time building inspector, we would, we would have a savings in that side? That's, that's the question.
I think it's important to do that, especially since, um, at almost nearly all of the recent council meetings, we've thrown more and more onto code enforcement that, and especially, you know, the conversation that we've had regarding, you know, Sheriff's Department, additional policing, you know, they're, so, they're working together with code enforcement. So I, I think it's important for us to add that position back in.
We would then, I mean, Bob can jump in when you feel, we could, we would then, uh, take savings. We would take savings and projected increase in revenue and fines, uh, as a way of, uh, of, of identifying costs, which may or may not be a hundred percent, but it would be closer than, than, than that. And just a, a commentary about our code enforcement people, they really work hard, and Denise.
They do, yeah.
And our code people do a great job, they're, and they're conscientious people, uh, but they're, they have a lot to do.
And you may wanna make this position an evening position.
Yes, sir, ma'am.
Something where, I know, and I know they do kinda alternate around it to evenings, but I mean, concentrating on that evening as well, you know, that people are, because especially if Ole's gonna have to start parking in his driveway at some point, and he doesn't, we sure, we wanna be able to nab it.
And, and the people who live in places like Bahia Vista, who have underground parking that is a requirement of the condition of their approvals, were supposed to be parking under there, but owners who are renting properties, and God bless them, but they're putting their stuff in there, so people can't park there. So now they're parked overcrowding the streets, so we, through enforcement of that.
A lot of issues, a lot of issues. So we're talking full-time code, and we're talking full-time building inspector looking into them, correct?
Yes, and there are revenue, if, Bob, there are, there, there is revenue in the budget for the full-time inspector, which would be less than what our contract costs, or at least there's a sufficient amount of money for contracting that would, that we could, uh, use for, uh, for a building inspector's position. I, I think we, I checked the numbers this morning with, uh, with Stephanie.
The, the, there was an estimate of about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars over the contracted part-time versus hiring a full-time, uh, building inspector. So if we put a full-time building inspector in the budget, it'd take a while to hire that person.
Of course it would, yes, yeah.
By chance, uh, it's the existing contracted building inspector.
We have to go through an open process, yeah.
So the effects wouldn't be felt for a couple of months.
Right.
And then, are we saying we, in addition to hiring a full-time building inspector, that we would then also hire a full-time code inspector, code, code enforcement officer?
That's what we're asking for now, yes, I believe, so.
So the effect of that would be about eighty thousand dollars? And if I'm assuming that the revenue of sixty thousand dollars is for two code enforcement, then the revenue would be another thirty thousand dollars?
No. Cause the third guy's gonna focus on downtown. So it'll be more, it'd be a larger revenue increase. Cause he won't be chasing dogs. And won't be chasing illegal construction. Of course he won't.
Okay, so parking meters. So we all, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
We all seem to be kind of in favor of parking meters at one point. I believe we all kinda were.
I, I think we need to go back and have our continued discussions about vehicles and such, and traffic in town. And I think that might come out of that, so it'd just be a budget amendment.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I didn't wanna, okay, good.
Well, um, I was gonna go back to, um, to personnel, because we've talked in the transportation study sessions as well about, um, some traffic control, especially on cruise ship days, um, between, on Crescent, from Crescent Clarissa and Crescent Metropole. And I didn't see anything in there. And then also, um, traffic control during the school time. Shouldn't Long Beach Unified participate at some level?
Well, it's interesting that you, you said that, Councilwoman, we didn't set this question up, but it, um, different cities do different things. Some cities that I, of which I've worked, both the school district and the city, participate in the cost of, of traffic, uh, personnel. Some, the school district pays it all, some, the city pays it all. Obviously, if the, the one where they pay something, they pay more is probably better from a budgetary standpoint. But, so each city, uh, each city does that different, and there is, in general, generally, a cost-sharing, uh, formula used.
So in a, in a bigger picture, and I don't wanna digress too far away, but, um, if there hasn't already been, um, an initiation of conversation with Long Beach Unified, I'm hoping that, that you, you could, because I'd like to see the school district offset some of the cost of Joe Machado Field, and certainly of some traffic assistance during the school times.
Are we on a total, total tit-for-tat on the use of school facilities versus city facilities?
We could probably do some pretty quick calculations on that. We are programming that gymnasium pretty heavily. We've, you know, running two to three basketball programs a year for adults. We started a, um, a women's basketball program, we got volleyball in there, we're doing, um, some open gym time on the weekends. Uh, we ran it, uh, a few days a week. So, uh, we'd have to look a little closer, we can do that, to get back to you, but it is probably a, a pretty clean wash.
Yeah.
For what we're using.
So, does dollars really even exchange, or no?
No.
No, okay, okay.
Just the agreement in place.
Okay.
Some, some in addition, although, and we've talked, you've talked about it previously, some school districts and cities also share costs for school resource officers. Um, or some school districts provide that full cost, some school districts and cities share. But there, there was a question about parking meters and about the traffic planning grant.
Yeah, I wanted to jump back to the parking meters real quick. A collaborative effort with, uh, Bob and Jordan and myself, we are preparing a grant, an active transportation plan grant, due this Thursday, oh my gosh, I hope we're ready. And this is a plan to look at everything. It looks at circulation, it looks at pedestrian facilities, it looks at bike facilities, and it looks at how you design all of that included in this, our workshops, where we invite the community, and we come up with a plan. And I think that that, if we have, if we get the money, it'll help us develop this master plan that not only we'll figure out, that'll look at capacity for future, but it'll be a framework to write more grants and do more things for the city. So I think that Ole's idea about maybe holding off on the parking meters until we, until, hopefully, we get this funding and we're able to do a really comprehensive citywide plan, uh, might be a worthwhile thing to wait, to see.
No, yeah, I get it, good. Are you gonna talk, or can we still talk?
It's your show.
You're the chair.
Okay, so, I understand the improvements to City Hall, kind of, that they're looking at. And that would be for storage and better office space and whatever, correct? That's what we're looking at?
Yeah, it was reduced.
What's that?
We reduced it. It was originally seventy-five, and we reduced it to forty.
I see that, okay. I also see a revenue source, or a way to diminish some of our expenses by using, we have one casita there.
Yes.
And one casita, two casitas.
Two casitas, three casitas more. Three casitas.
So, um, number one, on that one casita that we have that's sitting there open, vacant, I would like us to see us use that one way or another sooner than later. And I don't know if it's putting city attorneys in here, cause I don't know what it cost when he stays there, but we need to utilize that resource, number one.
As of this morning, uh, that, um, conversation has started, and we'll, we'll look at, the one, the casita that's, that's finished is, is pretty usable. We'll, we'll look at it, we'll see what it could be used, could it be used for office space? Could it be used for someone to stay as a consultant or an attorney? And it, 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 that's probably easy, that's uneasy.
That can generate probably twelve hundred dollars a month.
Or at least defer costs that we already are incurring for.
Right, even if it was a turnaround unit where we had a cleaning crew come in, if we had somebody here for two or three days working on a project, we could use that rather than paying the hotel fees.
But then, but then the question is, is it easier to rent it? Because now every time somebody comes in, there's, who's gonna wash the linens? Now we gotta pay for a cleaning service. So if it were rented to, if we could make it available to the city employee, somebody in the city that may need housing, I don't know what.
We, we are coming forward, though, and we're, we're coming forward with a, a campus utilization, identifying what spaces are available, uh, what space do we have? What could be better used, including housing, for employee housing? Um, and Bob Greenlaw is working right now on looking at our site, uh, in regard to that. In, but, but to your more, to your first point, is the existing casitas there, uh, there's the Birdman, uh, called the Birdman one, but there was the one that was the, the Bird.
Yes.
Birdman, with no disrespect. That, that one needs work to bring it up to code, to bring it up to some standard. Uh, the other one, uh, that, the, the, the one that's next to it, uh, is, is already up to standard, and, and it could just be maybe some minor design. Then you have the third unit, which is the one that you referred to earlier, which is.
Right.
Over there. Um, that, uh, we'd have to look at how that's used, or should it be used in the same way it's being used right now.
Right, okay. Anybody else? I can't believe everybody, nobody has it. Okay, I have another question. Bob Greenlaw? Is there, since we don't have goals, other than we know your capital improvement project, and I don't know how big a problem this is, and I don't, you've probably dealt with this before, but I know that there is a desire by some to have underground utilities in the alleys. And because it is, you see, it's nasty. It's, they're nasty. And I don't know how we could move forward to, to even let us know if that's something we would like to do, and how we would proceed with something like that going forward.
I can, I can do a sample estimate of one alley, so you can see what kinda cost you're gonna have. It is very expensive to do underground utilities.
Do they then, but, but who, do they put it on my tax roll that if?
They could, that would be one way, some type of assessment district, but it's the property owner that pays for it, usually not the city.
Right, yeah.
And there are programs, you know, like the Rule Twenty programs. And since that's not an arterial, it probably wouldn't be under the Twenty-A, it'd be under a Twenty-B, and it would be just, um, a, a portion of it that could be where there could be some credits from SCE that could help pay for that. But, um, it's still a very expensive proposition, so. Uh, I think if, even if some of the facilities could be a little more sanitary than they are, you know, just everywhere, if they could be cleaned up, modernized. But otherwise, you'd be looking for areas that maybe are major alleys. So, you know, um, next, between Vons out there, between, uh, Sumner and Catalina, you know, where there's very, very large facilities hanging on poles.
Right.
And, and it's, uh, the way the wires goes, it just doesn't appear what we'd like to see in that one alley versus some of the other, uh, and then some of the other alleys that are maybe more concentrated, we could take a look at those, but.
Well, now that, now there's, because there's every other old wire that looks like they're prob, I don't know if every wire that's connected is actually doing something.
Probably not.
And then you've, and so when they go to put something up, they should have to take something down. And then now you've got these big bundled things with zip ties on them that are just big around.
Absolutely, and that's one reason you go underground utilities. Let's get some numbers, so we can look at the data and see how we wanna pursue it.
And some of them are very, very close to residential units or stairways going into third-story structures. Um, when the redevelopment agency, the ACIA, was formed, one of the basis on which blight was determined back in the eighties was that alleys that needed to be improved. And, um, and so, uh, as Bob had said, and, and that you could use as part, an assessment district, and then as an incentive, without saying this is magic, or we'll have the funds, you could look at the EIFD, uh, possibly as a, a partial source of revenue to do that. And as Bob said, that also, that the, that the Rule Twenty money, I know we don't have a lot of that, but there may be other monies, and it may be that Edison would wanna kick in some money, because it would clean up utilities that they currently, where they're, it's a real mess. Uh, and so, we, but we need. Uh, and so, we, but we need to, we'll need to bring, we can bring something back, Bob. Uh, we'll do that.
Yeah. Not urgent, but, because look how long it's taken to get that ugly, but.
Don't forget to include broadband and.
Yes, good.
AT&amp;T.
And, and thank you, because, and just, uh, as you know, an update that the chamber is talking about, um, holding, and we will be hosting a meeting on the whole broadband issue and, and communications, and that critically, if we make any improvements or underground, that has to be done, and so the providers would be part of that, the cost, uh, sharing, I would think, also.
Good point. In my, uh, prior employer, I worked for Power and Water Utility, and besides the financial impacts that Bob will get for us, we also, it, it's difficult to coordinate efforts from everyone that's involved. You have AT&amp;T, you have SCE, you have the cable company, and just because one agency agrees to go underground, the other may not. And, and how you coordinate all that or mandate all that can be very complex.
Yeah, but not unsurmountable.
No, there's all, there's, there's many ways to do that, and Bob raises a good point, it's coordination issue, and I'm sure with the collaborative spirit that we're gonna have, that we're gonna get it, and there are other means, if there's not a collaborative spirit that you could use.
Cool.
But I'm sure there will be.
Just another question. If we wanted to increase fees, when do we do that? At mid-year?
What type of fees would you like to increase? We can do, increase fees anytime you'd like. We just need to go through the proper notification.
Okay.
We generally have done the fee schedule prior to entering into the budget, so I believe we did the fee schedule back in April or May.
Correct.
So, usually we go through the fee schedule in depth, very in depth, and then make decisions at that time. But you're right, if there's, if there's a reasoning throughout the year.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not totally sure, but, but, um, that's something we could look at, but if we've got some time, it's, it's nothing that's urgent.
If, if there are costs or programs, if there are costs that we are currently incurring or programs that we wish to, um, participate in where we don't have funds, then that, those become the basis for which you, you would use to establish the fee, and so, if, once we know, we can, we can take a look.
Okay. Fire department overtime?
Yes, I should've explained that one.
Well, and again, and not so much going back, but going forward.
Going forward. Right now, that's running about twenty-two percent of the overall, uh, payroll expenses for the fire department is overtime.
So, the, the line item, that, that, the, that's not in the reduction, right? That's in a different line item? Is that what you're?
I don't know, I'm just remembering something.
Yes, that would've been in a labor, in the labor section, which we haven't covered yet, but the fire department overtime, there was, uh, an error in last year's budget where instead of twenty-six thousand, I had two, uh, instead of two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, I had twenty-six thousand, okay?
And what are we projecting, projecting for this year?
Uh, it was around three-hundred thousand.
So, wasn't there something? Help me out here, there, there, because these details, I sure don't remember, but there was something about doing their scheduling so that we wouldn't have that kind of a number.
Yeah, though, my understanding is what happened in the past, uh, is that, that, with the Fair Labor Standards Act, and what is a work, what's the work period, that, um, you can define different work periods for public safety people, whether it be fire police. And, um, what, the schedule that was, that was promoted, and it, this is in no disrespect to anybody who participated, just a commentary, um, that what was promoted, um, staff was told that this was what they had to do, where, and what we will wanna discuss with labor is, is there another schedule that would, that would not require paying someone on shift overtime pay for just regular shift work?
Right.
And there's different, you can define the work week, a typical week, non-safety would be a forty-hour work week. Safety is different because it's twenty-four hours. So, the, so you can define, I think it's a hundred and six, it's a fifty-eight?
It's fifty-three per week.
Fifty-three, so a hundred, so you can, you, so you can, there's different schedules, and what we'd wanna do with labor is talk to them and look at that, but it is part of the existing MOU right now, so we'd have to defer, I believe, that conversation for discussion with, with labor.
I thought we covered that last MOU.
Sure.
I thought we covered that last MOU. Where they changed the schedule.
Well, then, it, it may have been changed, but the net result is that there is a, a two-hundred-and-some-thousand-dollar, um, overtime that's, that's budgeted for people on shift with no, again, no disrespect to them, uh, but, but, um, so we need to, we need to take a.
Go look at the MOU, because I think, I think we've covered that.
Yeah, and, and I think it, it, we have, but, but we can certainly look again.
I mean, cutting that in half, you could even put a hundred-and-some-thousand dollars into your fire truck replacement fund, I mean.
Yeah, that was where I was originally going with that, but we got sidetracked.
Yeah, our, our current MOU, sorry, it, it, it goes through June of, uh, is it June of next year, of eighteen? Anyone know?
Yes.
Yes, so, June of eighteen, so we would start discussions with them if there is a glitch. We'll start discussions with them early, uh, as, as early probably as, as the beginning of next year, uh, if not sooner.
But I think, um, Mayor Protem was saying that we had already had those conversations in this MOU.
Yeah, well, the MOU that, that my understanding is we're paying in accordance with the current MOU, but we will, if we're not certain that that's the case, we'll certainly recheck that, and I, and I believe that we are paying in accordance, which is, which is creating this overtime expense on a regular basis.
I'm, can, uh, uh, there's a lot of misstatements that have been said here. The, the overtime that we're talking about is not, eh, an increase because of the MOU. The, the increase is from one budget to the other because last year's budget was misstated. The total expense that we're projecting this year for the fire department is in line with what was expected after the MOU negotiation. The, the fiscal year seventeen budget was incorrect and it wasn't identified because we were paying in a different way, and there were significant changes in total salary, and so it didn't jump out as an anomaly. The way that we're paying right now is according to the MOU, the way the, the fire departments were being paid prior to the MOU being negotiated, the most recent one, was that they received almost like a salary for their regularly scheduled shifts, and then if they worked additional shifts due to covering for someone else, uh, sick or go on vacation or events going on, then that would be overtime. That's the way it was before the MOU. The MOU negotiated, uh, based on the FLSA fifty-three-hour work week, so some of our shifts are three-twenty-fours, which is seventy-two hours, that's an automatic nineteen hours of overtime regularly scheduled.
Wow.
It, uh, in addition to the overtime that is paid for when someone's sick or on vacation or special events. So.
So.
I, I think, uh, does that clarify anything for you? I, that, the, I can do, what I could do is, is do a schedule of what our annual wages were for fire prior to the MOU. Would you like to see that?
I think that would be helpful. Um, I mean, my next comment, which I know somewhere in my head, I have this information already, is, you know, is there a way that we can utilize our reserve staff? And, and I know, I know there's reasons why you can't, I just unfortunately can't remember them off the top of my head, but there is a reason, specific training engineers or, you know, certain requirements, but, but I know we have some reserves that have particular training.
Exactly, the, the, um, we did an analysis of if we were to, idea, if we found someone that was a jack-of-all-trades that could do any position in the fire department and was willing to, to do any position, uh, we looked at what, how that would affect the expenditures, and the expenditures would be in excess of what we're paying in, in overtime.
I, I will just say that I've worked in full-service fire departments, fire agencies, up to about seventy thousand people, and I think that, and I'm, and I'm very proud, as you are, of the service at our fire department and our fire, and the leadership of our fire chief. Um, I think some of these conversations about use of reserves, uh, or, or, or something that we, we would wanna engage him and engage our, uh, association to have a conversation and see if there are other ways, uh, that we can deliver service. Certainly, this department is much larger, mu, it's much, uh, more, um, robust than it, than it, than it was in the eighties. And, um, and, uh, and, and that's to your credit and to previous council's credit, but, but, but as far as all of the, how do reserves work in some cities, you know, there's some very small cities that have complete volunteer fire departments, I'd never recommend that, but, but then there's some that have mixtures of reserves, and I think our fire chief, Mike Krug, who's just a great leader, uh, and, and our fine department, that through conversations we can have with them, we can, we can examine ways to try to control costs, uh, as you've suggested.
So, yes, there's money in there for Dr. Denny, correct? Denise, that's usually your bailiwick, huh?
We give.
There's fifteen thousand for the Humane Society.
Humane Society.
I don't think we have a line item for Dr. Denny.
Oh, and then they pay him.
No, it's Humane Society, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So, does anybody know what, um, what's that almanac, old farmer's almanac? Wonder how it's predicting rain for this upcoming year? Anybody know? Ole, look it up. Because that really has an impact on us in, in a lot of different ways. Number one, simply is our projections for what, what our visitor count would be, because it really did impact the fact that we had so much rain. And the other thing is, is I'm curious about rain gutters, because I've been asking for rain gutters, at least, um, we, there's some buildings we could put it on. I know some of them we can't because they're built inside, but like on the casitas and different ones, um, because I think we keep saying we wanna be green, we wanna be self-sufficient and self-supporting, and, and then, I don't know, and, yes, you know, we're still gonna look at electric vehicles and the other one too, LPG or whatever you call them. That was, was it?
That was it.
Oh, okay. Um, but I wanted not us to lose sight of, of all of those kinds of things going forward and, um.
When you say, Mayor, rain gutters, you mean on public buildings that?
Yes.
Currently don't, so you can collect the water, and that water could then be reused for?
And part of this building you can, because you've got some of the old casita in it, I think. And, and then, of course, you've said you're all gonna be looking into solar panels, but, but there's a heck of a lot of water that comes off these buildings when it rains, and again, then I, then I guess Bob'd say, well, where are we gonna store all this water if we get it? But, um, I don't know. Just, I don't know.
If the council, though, I mean, we, we certainly, that, that.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
How we collect water through drains into a, into a bucket of some kind or something? Yes, history.
And well, if, for long as we're, if we keep getting the free water from Island Company out there, because I know we're using those totes, I mean, maybe it isn't as urgent. Another thing on the Public Works Department, the, the stuff you put on to, to paint the lines that doesn't go off to make better use of her time, are you, do you, are you for that kinda stuff? You gonna budget that kinda material?
Thermoplastic, thermoplastic.
I guess you're talking about thermoplastic.
Yes.
And getting, uh, some type of thermoplastic machine, a smaller one?
I don't know how you put it down there.
Yeah, that's usually what other agencies do, is they have a walk-behind thermoplastic machine for stop, you know, the ledges and then like stop bars, crosswalks. And, uh, it has a longevity of about seven years versus going out there every year. And, uh, yeah, I can bring that.
Three, two or three times.
Yeah, I can do an analysis and bring that to you as we start discussing all of our transportation, you know, and how to make some of those improvements.
Okay, thank you. Let's, can we talk about recreation a little bit? Because I know that there was some interest in increasing the staffing levels. Do you wanna explain the staffing levels for recreation and, and what it looks like you're gonna be offered this next year and, and kinda what your goals were to needing to increase that a little bit?
Um, the current staffing level is, myself, Dave Hard is a recreation coordinator. Um, I believe we transferred one of the, uh, Public Works full-time positions in, uh, to parks, uh, to, to oversee the parks. So, there'd be the three full-time positions, and then we're currently budgeted for four part-time positions. One of them, I've got assisting administratively, uh, gonna be working on implementation of uh, some software, uh, recreation software, um, working a little bit more with seniors. Uh, I've got somebody working, uh, teens, and it's a twenty-hour position, running the teen center. Uh, we brought in another part-time position, um, in the parks, um, where we didn't have staffing twice a week. We've got staffing, um, seven days a week now, going through the parks and making sure they're clean for the day, and I, I hope you're seeing some improvements there overall. Um, and then the fourth position, um, was kinda general recreation. Uh, we did take on the summer camp this past year. Um, I had put in additional two positions, um, really, part-time positions, really needed, you know, position, a position and a half to do more of what we've been doing. We wanna continue to grow the, the programs, um, and the rate that we've been doing. Uh, some of the things that we're talking about is more teen services, more certainly senior services. I'm spending some time with them and like to get some assistance there. Um, we're talking about doing a sailing program, getting some sabbats, and then, uh, we've got some access for this summer, um, doing some sailing. So, just some additional programming along those lines. So, uh, those were, um, you know, half, uh, one, one and a half positions that was cut as part of the, the recreation needs we had.
So, now, so tell me again, it's the, it's you three full-timers and you, and you have two part-timers?
Uh, we have four part-timers.
Part-timers, and you were wanting to increase that even a little bit more?
To, yeah, five and a half or six.
Is there revenue associated with the programs that you would be hiring people?
Uh, there is revenue associated, um, with, um, but it's all, at this point, it's, it's been budgeted, um, so, I mean, we certainly understand the other concerns of the city. We will certainly make do with what we've got, um, but, you know, if we, some funding was available for, you know, another full, uh, part-time, which is about sixteen thousand dollars, um, that would be helpful.
And I understand what you're saying, mindset, offsetting it some, with, with some revenue, uh, because one of the things, and, and we have this, we had this discussion earlier is we have been extremely generous in, in what we've been offering our community in terms of programs, and I know there's, that is, there's that tricky balance, you know, they pay five dollars, now they, they got it for free, now you pay five dollars and they won't come. Uh, but that's, I, I, you know, I mean, you talk about entitlements, I mean, there's a point where I, I guess we have to figure that out, and maybe we're gonna do that with that study that, because you got budgeted, because you got that study budgeted, correct?
There is a recreation, um, yeah, recreation, um.
Needs assessment thing.
Needs assessment, um, budgeted for, and one of the things I think we do is we look at, as of right now, we are, um, our cost to run a program, whether it's a basketball program or it's a summer camp program, is specifically for, uh, the pro, the direct program fees. It's not covering my time, it's not covering Dave's time. Um, at times, it's covering some staffing, like the summer camp, uh, but for basketball, for example, it goes into uniforms, it goes into a little bit officiating, and it goes into, you know, award ceremony thereafter, and, and that's it. Um, I think we need to look at pushing that envelope a little bit and taking a thirty-five dollar fee, a forty or forty-five dollar fee to start paying for some of the, the staffing, and we can come back, and we talked about the fee schedule, come back and make some recommendations that way.
Right. Um, this halftime person, that, if, even if we've said, well, we, we could do a halftime person, you would need that person, you would want that person now, or is that something that would, could hold off for a couple months? I mean, you needed it for, for your winter programming, you need, you need that person too?
Uh, we would probably need it, um, in spring, um, so it's something that we can revisit during the, um, mid-year adjustment.
So, we can defer on six.
Yeah, we can see how the, the, the hour leads are doing and then revisit it at that point.
Okay. And I, you know, I know that you've been approached by, uh, Janice Hahn's office about, about things that you may want or whatever, and, and maybe, I think you maybe gave her a list that was big and then maybe some little, so maybe we can follow up on the little stuff, you know, until she'll, until she builds us a community center, we can just.
That was the big ask, uh, and then we had some, some smaller things. That was the big ask, and then we had some, some smaller things as well, so certainly we can follow up on that as well.
Yeah, and maybe, just to, you know, for example, when you were taking, when you took the seniors over town to go to the play or wherever they went. I mean, that's really awesome, and, and we have Jerry Gaines sitting in the back here, who's their senior advocate for the county, so he's probably taking notes as well. So, good.
Thank you.
Joseph, there had to be something you wanted that you're not getting. There anything?
Trash cans, and then what about, what are we doing about casino dock?
That'll be on the next agenda.
It's the fifth, yes, sir.
Okay, so, so my idea is to move the money from, let's see, move the money from reclaimed water for one year, borrow it to build the casino dock, and then pay it back with the, with some of the revenue from, from the casino dock, and then just continue on with the reclaimed water program the next year. It's about half a million dollars.
The building, I think, non-pervailing wage is about, for the shells, about three hundred thousand. And then interior, if it's built non-pervailing wage, I think the numbers bump up about, for labor, about thirty percent if we do it. But if, and, and let me just not, it would have been nice if, in the beginning, that would have been, if you were in a position to do that. That would have been, that would, everyone could then compete for this on an equal footing.
It doesn't matter at this point, nobody else is interested in it, so this, you know, and if they are, it's too bad, it's too late.
But it's not too late, Joseph.
That'll be a conversation for you at...
That, that's what the discussion will be on the council, at the council meeting. And the reclaimed water, I think that line item was removed, right?
Well, what it, what it, what it is, it's, and thank you, that item is, is not deferred so much, but the funding for that will come, we're proposing out of EIFD. And, but the larger question is where, that we don't know the answer to, is where does reclaimed water come in relationship to salt water and desal, in relationship to rainwater? And that conversation will be one that we're actually starting to have this week with the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. And we need to see where all those pieces fit. And MBI, that did your, your reclaimed water study, admits that there may be more components before investing fourteen million dollars in a reclaimed system that will not produce enough water, but it may produce part of what we need, but not all of it. And how does it all fit? We don't know that answer. But, so, there's, the money's not lost in, in the sense that we're, we would propose...
You're losing me, you're losing me.
Sir?
You're losing me.
I sometimes lose myself. The money we would propose being, come out of EIFD, Enhanced Infrastructure Financing, not out of the city's general fund. That's what we would suggest to you, rather than, so...
Oh, so, is it, can you do that or not? Can we take the money from, that we've been budgeted for reclaimed water and build the casino dock with it?
The answer is, if you direct, you direct it, that can happen, and then we would have to look at where other reductions in operations would have to be, yes. Yeah, but we can do it, sure.
Okay, yeah, that's what I want to do. And, and so, so if we put it back online for everybody else, then that's fine. Then we'll get the, may the best man win at this point. I just want to build it, get it built, so that we can start generating revenue with, from that. And that, that's, that money from, that was reclaimed money, was money that me and Annie pretty much fought to get on the budget. And we had to have somebody else approve it with us too. But I think we can, we can balk on that for a year, since the reclaimed project is going to take ten years to build anyways. If we do it, that is, in the long run, or we can just streamline it, is what we can do in the end, if there's not enough water or something like that. That was the old days, that was what happened before. I mean, doesn't mean that's what's going to happen now. There's new technology, there's new programs, there's new ideas out there.
There's also some federal funds that are available for reclaimed...
It's not in this year's budget.
Why is the reclaim not in this year's budget?
They took it out to balance the budget.
Who took it out?
I take responsibility for what we're...
Okay, well, why don't, why didn't you guys say something to us about it? Or ask us, why didn't, why isn't it...
That's why we're here.
This is where, this is the time. This is the time.
Okay, you guys just took that out of there to balance the budget. Well, where did it go to? Where did that five hundred million dollar, where, where did that half a million dollars go? Is that what it was, or three hundred thousand?
It's about, I think it was five hundred, sir.
It's a fifteen million dollar project, it was five hundred thousand dollars for the initial work to...
Well, that's the money that we were...
To initialize it.
If you would have put that in, that was the money that we were going to suggest that you build the casino dock with. Then we, then we can go on with this program. So, maybe you might want to find that money again and put it back in there for the casino dock, build the casino dock, and then we get on with business, as usual.
Well, that will be up for us to find the five hundred thousand, because I think staff says this, we've cut as much as we can, this is what we're feeling good with, or not so good with, but it is. And then I think we would have to be the hard ass that say this is what's going to happen.
Okay, I'll be the hard ass, I'll find it, I'll find it in this budget, no problem. And I'll bring it back, and then we can build the casino dock with that money. But I'm going to, I'm going to pull some things out of this budget, and you're, you're going to see a big change. And it's, and, and I don't care if it makes people cry or not, I'm going to pull it out, because I want to build the casino dock with that money that was supposed to be in this budget for...
Reclaim.
Reclaim, thank you.
And that, and that, certainly that action on the decisions on the, on the fuel dock restaurant will be something on the fifth that will be a discussion, given the current, though not on this agenda, but the current proposal. And then the options, if that current proposal is not acceptable, what would be the next steps? And that would fall in line with, how do we do it? What do we do? Are we going to go out to RFP again, are we going to, or, or, or complete the project with the current party? And that's, will be on the fifth, there'll be a discussion, I'm sure.
So, I, I just wanted to address the reclaimed water, so that, show that we are making progress, okay? So, what we're doing right now is we're verifying that our plant is in good enough shape to actually get the reclaim out of, it's forty-five years old. And so, that's our first step, because...
Well, they just yank your money out of there.
Yeah, okay, and so, then, right now, there is a grant opportunity for seventy-five thousand dollars to be able to study that piece and then also the reclaimed piece, what we receive, so that we make sure that we're at the right site with the right components before we spend any additional money, and we're pursuing that right now. So, we'll bring that to you, once we get all the details.
All right, well, let's see if we can, if we can budget the money to build the casino dock in this budget. Let's do that with that, with that five hundred thousand. It's obvious we can work out the reclaimed water. With technology advancing and things becoming less expensive because, just because of technology and because of modernization of, of, of the way things are working in, in society in general. We need to, we need to be able to build that casino dock, and then we need to get back into figuring out exactly what size reclaimed water system that we can have and, and what'll work for our community, what'll work for, for our budget and our community as well. Anyway, that's all I want.
So, a couple of other things. I would like the city of Avalon to become a sister city. And I don't know if, it's, it's only cost two hundred and fifty dollars to become, to start the paperwork, to become a sister city. So, that is something I would discuss at a council meeting, and that would probably come out of our, our, our city council pot.
It would, yeah, I, I think the, the U.S. Sister City Association, the International Sister City Association can provide, they have a lot of information about forming and selecting, and you may already have ideas, the council members, if that's something the council wishes to pursue. But, and, and if a sister city were to be sought, then there should be some budget for that, for that process that we would, we would need your direction to include in a budget with that, but, yeah.
You know another question? It's lunchtime, but interns, do, are we going to budget for interns for next year? Because we seem to use a lot of them this summer.
We have used interns, and we're currently using some interns from, two, we have two.
You got one in planning and one in public works?
I'm not doing next year's budget yet.
Okay, but are they, these people going to stay on, keep going, are they, are these folks leaving at the end of summer? Oh, yours is leaving, huh, Amanda? She's gone, and, and Bob, is yours still around?
Yes, he's still around, but up to, at least to the limit of, we're reducing the part-time hours, right?
Oh, okay.
Which is in the budget there.
Okay, I didn't, I never seen it.
So, that would reduce down the hours that he would have available to him. And he's currently working on the, getting all our records in order and the laser fish, and making sure that everything's electronic and accessible by everybody and very transparent for the public.
Oh, good, that's what he's, good, okay. So, so what do we, what do we do now? Do we say...
Go back and work on it and get the test again.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, my, and this is, this is bad on, bad on us, but let me, let me just say that I know that, as the mayor partem has reminded me on, on an occasion, is that at a point that will be soon, we need an operating budget that's approved, so that we can legitimately make expenditures. And it's not, this isn't your, it's not a problem that you've created. So, so if we brought back, we, something to you on the fifth, on, I guess it depends in part on answers to questions that you have posed. But I think at some point soon, we're going to...
Well, I, I wrote down fourteen items of, of requests. I can go over those real quickly before we finish. Just on the labor, I'd like to point out that we reduced our full-time equivalents by four point three compared to the prior year budget. And physically, just by number of employees, we reduced by one from last year's budget to this year's proposed budget. Do you want me to go through the list of items I have real quickly? So, reconsider the admissions tax for Island Company for their inland tours, probably lowering the revenue by about fifty thousand dollars for admissions tax. I'll give them a call, and maybe they can give me an estimate. Fuel prices to offset, to, to look at the opportunities to offset the fuel prices, so that they don't have a two hundred thousand dollar net loss. The host compliance, look at the staff presentation as to what the estimated additional TOT, and, and implement that into the proposed budget. Be more aggressive on reducing the TOT expected, the lost TOT due to the at-water being closed by about fifty percent of what we received, which would be about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Look at the rent for sheriffs, find out where that's shown here on the budget, and report about whether that's being paid regularly. Identify the shoreboat subsidy clearly on the budget, rather than just contract services. Present department leader goals to the city council. Look at shading for Front Street. Council member Sampson, you had a question about trash cans, were they answered with the hundred and forty thousand dollar CalRecycle grant that looks like we're going to be awarded and replacing about a hundred trash cans?
Yeah, that would be all right, that'd be a good start.
So, I'll include that in the budget also, just so that it's there. Find out what the typical percentage of legal fees is per, for, for cities similar to ours. Add back a code enforcement full-time and add more than thirty thousand dollars revenue. Did you have a target of what you think?
Standard of thirty.
So, so sixty thousand? And then a full-time building inspector? Do a comparison of fire department wages from year to year, going back probably like five years. I'll, I'll do five years of historical, of what the total fire department wages were for the nine fire department employees.
Is it wages or just overtime?
Well, we have to look at it in total, because overtime is being treated differently. There's scheduled overtime, whereas before, there wasn't scheduled overtime. So, we need to look at what our total costs are. Now, our total costs on an annual basis will have increased, but what I'm expecting to find is that they've increased by what was recommended by COF study. And then the last item was to, do we want to put in the casino dock being built by the harbor?
I don't know that, can we say that until we have the council meeting on Friday, I mean, on Tuesday?
Well, this is the budget session, so I, I guess if you said to us, find the money to build the building, then that would be our, it would be a task that we would have to do. But we would also have to tell you then what the implications of that might be on reserves or on other cash, or what the return is, over what time. The, the fuel dock restaurant, based on the current lease schedule, is not a cash, positive cash-producing, and it won't be because of the lease cost that we have, it's, when it goes up to a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The best, even at eight percent, was, it could have been like eighty thousand dollars if, on a flat eight percent. But it's, but there's still, that, it's that lease cost, which is, which is the drag on profit at, at that center. And gas prices can't be, offset that, you'd be up at ten or eleven dollars, but, so, so...
Is that the property easement?
Yes, sir.
It's the, it's the island companies, but...
Yes, sir.
We haven't been shown a deed for it yet?
I, I have not seen one.
Yeah, I haven't seen a deed yet either.
But I would hope that maybe, that the, the company would engage us, as you've instructed in the past, is that we take a look at acquiring that, as was offered to the city a few years ago.
Well, we're pretending that they own it, and, and we'll pay them what they want for the time being, but I, I think we need to see it, see some paperwork that shows that they actually own it and that the city relinquished it to them at one point or another, before nineteen forty-eight, which is what the paperwork shows up to this point. Shouldn't there be five hundred thousand dollars in, in a, in a fund for the reclaimed water?
You earmarked in the last fiscal year, five hundred thousand of general fund.
So, we, we did earmark five hundred thousand, right? Last year, so that money is saved?
No.
No.
In this budget, it has been proposed to be used and replaced with money that you'll get through the...
Wait a minute, I thought it was in, we, I thought it was in last year's budget.
But it doesn't automatically roll over.
Yeah, but, so, where's the five hundred dollars? Where, where's the five hundred thousand dollars that we...
It's been repurposed to target some of the other stuff that they want to do this year, or seventeen, eighteen.
Didn't, oh, so we didn't, we haven't, we haven't, but, we had, so we haven't gone through one year yet to where we saved five hundred thousand dollars yet? Is that what you're saying? I thought last...
Five hundred was budgeted for last year, sixteen, seventeen.
Okay.
We didn't spend it, they didn't carry it over into seventeen, eighteen.
We didn't spend it, so it's still there, right?
No, they didn't carry it over.
What does that mean?
They didn't include it in this year's budget.
Okay, I know that, so there should be five hundred thousand dollars saved up, correct?
Until you approve, until you approve a new budget that would reallocate or repurpose that money, that money is there. I would, I would, I would, you, you could argue that it is there, until, until the new budget is adopted and that money reallocated, funds that would be reallocated, so...
No, I don't understand, you, you gotta, you gotta make yourself clear here.
Yeah, here's, here it is.
We, we agreed... We, we agreed as a council to save $500,000 a year for 10 years. I guess it was for 10 years, or, or until we had enough money, I, I, I don't know exactly how long. That was before last year's budget. We were, we agreed to save $500,000. Do you not, on-
Yes, I, I, we did not establish a new fund for reclamation, which you're describing a special fund established for reclaimed water, and we did not, we did not set aside $500,000 and put it into a reclaimed water fund. The budget for last year was to spend up to $500,000 towards designing the reclaimed water system for a $15 million total project.
Okay, so where's the money at?
It wasn't spent.
It wasn't spent. Okay, so it's there, then? It's somewhere, right?
Well, it's now it's in here. Now it's at all these other numbers.
So then, if we approve of another 500,000, 500,000, there's going to be a million this year? Is that what you're saying? Because each year, it's $500,000, so it grows, you start with 500, then the next year it's one, a million, then it's 1.5 million, then it's 2 million, correct? Isn't that how this works?
That is the way, my understanding, and the budget that was adopted prior to-
I mean, when I saved $500 last year, it's still in my bank account this year, and then I put another 500 in this year, and I have $1,000.
Arguably, and, and, that, that is what I believe that last year you did, was put aside 500 of general fund into a, in, set it aside for what would be a fund to develop the idea of reclaimed water, yes, and that you had talked about, apparently, I wasn't here at the time, but you had talked about doing that on an annual basis.
So is this how, how, how we hide money? Is this how we-
I don't hide anything, but, um, so I just, just so you know, I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I don't hide, I think, I think, though, in fairness to-
Well, I want someone to explain this to me and make sense.
So when you, okay, so, when you balance the, we, we say we're going to balance the budget. We're balancing the budget to, to what, to, we're saying our revenues and our expenditures can do that, and then keep so much in reserve.
Let me try to come up with, and I, what the, the two of you are describing is not my understanding of what the budget was for the $500,000 reclaimed water system.
I thought we were going to save $500,000 for a reclaimed water fund, so we take that $500,000, and we drop it in an account, and we save it, and then next year, we save another 500,000, and we put that in there, and then there's a million dollars in there.
That wasn't my understanding. My understanding was that we would hire a consultant and spend up to $500,000 designing the, the system. That was my understanding. So it'd be equivalent to you, for your personal budget, deciding you want to budget, you're going, you're anticipating you're going to buy a new golf cart next year, and, and the year goes by, and you don't spend money on that new golf cart, and instead, you decide you want to go to Hawaii instead. So you still haven't bought that golf cart, but you're spending your money on something else now, for your personal budget. It's not that you put money aside for that golf cart.
Well, as technology grows, it would be dumb to design, it would just be stupid to design a system right now that is, that we're not going to use for 10 more years. I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't we just save our money, and then, and then take the technology that's available in 10 years from now, and then go ahead and start designing our, our program then? I mean, that, that would make sense to me. I want to know, I just want to know, are we going to be able to purchase and pay for the casino dock with the money that we set aside for, um, the reclaimed water budget? I, I, see, because you guys have lost me now, now, now-
If you direct that we find money to build a casino dock for the amount that we would estimate the bid would be, that would be our task to come back to you.
I thought it was in an account, and I was just going to ask you to take that money out of that account, borrow it from that account, go ahead and build a casino dock, and then pay it back with the, with the revenue that we're going to generate from that. I think that's, that project is important enough to us to, to go ahead and find the money to build the casino dock.
Then that's what you tell us.
Then we'll find a land, a tenant a lot easier that way, too, um, and then we'll start generating revenue right away. Then we can replenish the money that, that we're supposed to have from last year, the $500,000, which you guys tell me now has somehow dissipated into thin air.
Jesus, man, unbelievable.
There is no amount of money that we will generate from a lease, from a lease of the, and this is not your fault, it's just what it is, there is no amount of money that we will generate from a lease that will pay a lease rate that we are now paying to the company for property that it, and, and I've said this before, and I'm trying, and try to be nice and politically correct and so on, it's overpriced, it's an overpriced lease that we're paying for, and unless we generated 140,000 or something less than that, we're not going to, we're not going to have any surplus, we'll just be offsetting costs. But if you're, if you're, if the council says, go find some money to build those casino dock, then we'll, we can take a look at that. Let me just, last thing, if I will, on reclaimed water. In my opinion, based on my own experiences, um, the $500,000 should come out of an enterprise operation that would be established for reclaimed water, and it could be part of the wastewater treatment, uh, operation, it should be coming out of a wastewater treatment, because that, it's akin to that, not out of the city's general fund, which should be used for general operations, for public safety, for other things. So, um, maybe we look at how we would, um, we would reframe this allocation to, to a fund that, where it's supposed to be, rather than in the general fund, because you're, and, and, so that's the last part. So if you, but if the council says, go find money to build it, and, you know, if you, if you so direct, then we'll, then we'll tell you how we think it could be done, and what the implications are, we, we'd be happy to do that.
Coach, I know a following in that, I mean, we, the city of Avalon is capable of going out and getting a loan? We can't? Oh.
Well-
It has to be those special kinds of things, like bonds and whatever? Okay, we can't just say we want to go out and get a loan at U.S. Bank for $300,000?
We would issue bonds.
We have to.
For a $15 million project, if that's what you want.
Oh, no, 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 to build the casino dock. I wasn't going 15 mil, I was going 390,000, if it's going to cost us 30% more. You can't just go to, we just can't go to the bank?
I don't believe so, but I can-
We would have to talk to count, legal counsel, but we could, we could check it out.
No, I, I-
Yeah, I, I, I think there's, we do a lot of purchases, as I've reminded council, um, we've done, we do a lot of purchases, we call lease purchase, where we lease purchase equipment over time. We've done it in this city, we've done it in seven other cities that I've, I've worked in. The question, though, is, can you, what would you be leasing, and what would be the purpose? What, what, what the restriction is in the law, I'm told, is that one council cannot commit-
Bind another one.
Revenue on, on expenditures on a, on a, on a continuing basis, and go to a bank and take a loan, and then bind the next council. But in fact, we do that anyway. So that'll be a discussion with, with, with our lawyer.
The, the concern I would have with the casino dock, if, cafe, if we were to construct it, is that the, those funds would be the, from the harbor fund in one way or another, and the harbor fund, uh, we need to be, we, we need to be thinking about the mall. The mall is a multimillion dollar project that we have to have matching funds, and if we erode away the, the reserve, the cash reserves that we have right now in the harbor fund, uh, we may lose opportunities that, of reconstructing the mall.
And we are going to discuss this Tuesday. I think that we'll come to an end there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we just say, any, any comments from the audience? Anybody want to, any department head want to talk about something you didn't get? This will be your chance to say-
No, they get one more chance at it.
Oh, do they get one more chance?
Yeah, they're not done.
Oh, okay, but if he was going to be out there fixing numbers, I thought this might be a good time. Okay, well, I want to thank you, everybody, for your input, and, uh-
See you, Joseph.
May the journey.